I invite you all to take a seat. We have a quorum present and the 2014 Annual Hingham Town Meeting is called to order. I invite now Reverend Kenneth Reed Brown, Minister of Old Ship Church, to come forward and give the invocation.
Good evening. It's good that you're here, that we're here. Isn't this good? To be here to do the town's business. Thank you. May we pause for a moment of reflection. Though we here gathered are of many faiths, including those who adhere to no particular religious faith, and though we here gathered are of many backgrounds and varied ages, and though we here gathered do many different kinds of good work in the world and in our homes, we gather for one shared purpose, a good purpose, to honor the democratic tradition of Hingham's Town Meeting through our presence and participation. And so, may we do the work of this town meeting with respect for our differences and with gratitude for all that we share in our beautiful town, our beautiful land, and on this precious earth. Yes, how fortunate we are just to be here, for we know that there are others in other places who suffer in the midst of war. We know the sons and daughters of our own land put themselves in harm's way. How fortunate we are to be here tonight. And so, may we speak our opinions honestly and straightforwardly, and at the same time, may we listen to one another with open minds and mutual respect, assuming the highest and best motives, one and all. May the decisions we make honor our forbears and at the same time do justice to future generations who will inherit their town and the world from us. In this spirit, spirit of kindness and respect and gratitude, may we embark upon and continue the work that is before us. So may it be. Amen.
Next, I invite our Veterans Services Officer Keith German to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I note that Keith will be leaving the safety and security of the town of Hingham on June the 20th, when he will begin active duty in the Navy, attached to the Army, in the Horn of Africa, in Somalia, and Yemen, for a term of well over a year. May he return to us safely in September 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, appointed and elected officials, citizens at large. Please join me in reciting our nation's Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now invite Eileen McCracken, the town clerk, to read the call of the meeting. Mrs. McCracken.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts Plymouth SS. To the Constable of the Town of Hingham in the County of Plymouth, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Hingham, qualified to vote in Town Affairs, to meet at the high school, 17 Union Street in said Hingham, Monday, the 28th day of April 2014, at 7:00 in the evening, then and there to act on the following articles, 1 through 37, given under our hands at Hingham this third day of April in the year of our Lord 2014. L. Bruce Robuffo, Irma H. Lauder, Paul K. Healy, Selectmen of Hingham. By virtue of this within warrant, I hereby certify that I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Hingham, qualified to vote in Hingham Affairs, to meet at the time and place indicated in the warrant, by causing an attested copy thereof to be published in the Hingham Journal, seven days at least before the day appointed for this meeting. It was presented to and posted by the town clerk, the town hall, on the 4th day of April 2014. Kathleen A. Peliquin, Constable of Hingham.
Thank you, Mrs. McCracken. The meeting appears to be properly and duly called. I note that there is available this evening in each room the booklet that contains the warrant for the meeting, as well as the recommendations and report of the Advisory Committee, and the reports of the Board of Selectmen, the Capitol, Outlay Committee, the Personnel Board, and the School Department. There is also a separate supplemental report of the Advisory Committee, which will aid you in participating in the business of the meeting. Please be sure you have both a warrant and the supplemental report of the Advisory Committee. I note that I have appointed Mary Jane O'Mara as an Assistant Moderator if it should be necessary to use the auditorium. In addition, I have appointed citizens of the town to serve as tellers for any standing votes and any ballot votes. As is our tradition, I admitted to the meeting a number of guests who are seated in the guest section to my right, to your left. We are delighted to have them with us. They are not allowed, of course, to vote on any matters that come before the meeting. On behalf of all citizens, I thank Hingham Community Access Media for providing the closed-circuit television coverage for this evening's meeting. The meeting is also being recorded for later broadcast on the local access cable channels. There is, of course, no smoking allowed anywhere in the building. I also invite you to take a moment to locate the emergency exit that is nearest to you. I ask that you also take this time to turn off all cell phones and pagers. I also urge you to refrain from using your telephones and texting absent an emergency for another compelling reason to do so. The town election is coming up. The town election will be held on Saturday, May the 3rd, for Precincts 1, 2, 3, and 4 at the high school, for Precincts 5 and 6 at the middle school, for Precinct 5A at Lyndon Ponds and the Oak Leaf Clubhouse. The hours for voting are 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and this is all set forth in detail on page 62 of your green warrant booklet. Mrs. McCracken has asked me to pass on the following information to those who may be unable to vote during the normal polling hours on Saturday, May the 3rd, but who could come to vote at Town Hall prior to May 3. A person who will be unable to vote during the polling hours on Saturday, May the 3rd, may vote at the town clerk's office during regular business hours any day before the 3rd, but not later than noon on Friday, May 2nd. So, office hours until May 2 at noon time. I call your attention to the Talent Bank Application Form that is set forth at the end of the warrant booklet. It's at page 81. The Selectmen and the Moderator always welcome volunteers for service on the many town committees and boards that are appointed. If you are interested, we invite you to fill out a Talent Bank Application Form and drop it either in the box, mark cleverly "Talent Bank Applications" in the back of the hall, or return it to me or to the Selectmen's Office at any time. The Selectmen and the Moderator will meet with those who wish to give service to the town, and those sessions are typically ones that take place in May and June. They're at Town Hall, and dates are publicized well in advance. I'd like to introduce the people on the platform. To my right, Paul Healy, Selectman; Irma Lauder, Selectman; Eileen McCracken, our town clerk; to my left, Betty Foley, our Assistant Town Administrator; Bruce Robuffo, Chair of the Board of Selectmen; and Ted Alexiades, our Town Administrator. At this time, I would invite Chairman Robuffo to come forward in our traditional remembrance of town officials and employees who have passed on since our last town meeting in April of 2013. Mr. Robuffo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would ask that you all pause and memorialize the names I'm about to read to you, deceased members of the town who were employees, all of whom were retirees as well. June A. Cataldo, Elizabeth M. Howlett, Bruce W. Kelly, John E. Kelly, Alfred J. Shaw, E. Franklin Southers, Dorothy Valentino, Charlotte E. Weber, and Mary Rita Webster. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robuffo. Next, I call your attention to the Moderator's message that is set forth at pages 3 and 4 of the warrant booklet. I have there summarized some of the town bylaws and other procedures that are followed in the conduct of the Hingham Town Meeting. I'll take just a moment to highlight some of the more important matters that should be familiar to many but may be new to some. We go through in the warrant a series of articles. Our articles effectively are questions that are posed to the town meeting. The town meeting, of course, is the legislative body of the Town of Hingham. In each instance, an article has a motion attached to it. The motion is actually what we move on. The Advisory Committee, which is seated to my left, 15 members of the Advisory Committee, may have an affirmative motion that they recommend under a given article, in which case it is received as the main motion before the meeting. In certain cases, the Advisory Committee may recommend no action under an article, and a voter may offer an affirmative motion, in which case the voter's motion is received as the main motion under the article and considered by you, Hingham Town Meeting. We have limits on speaking. No person may speak on any subject for more than six minutes for the first time, and no more than three minutes the second time. I will keep time and let you know when you have one minute remaining. I'd like to take a moment in addition to mention in particular the procedures that we use at Hingham Town Meeting for voting. All votes are taken in the first instance by voice vote. If the moderator is in doubt as to the results of that voice vote, or if seven voters rise and express doubt as to the result declared by the moderator, then a standing vote is taken, except that a ballot vote is taken in lieu of a standing vote if either the Advisory Committee or 50 voters promptly call for a ballot vote. As a ballot vote takes considerable time, our practice has been not to request a ballot vote in the absence of compelling reasons to do so. Again, the Speaker will have six minutes the first time he or she speaks, three minutes the second time, and I will let you know when you have one minute remaining. You should conclude your remarks promptly when I tell you that your time has expired. Please remember, if you desire to speak, rise and seek the attention of the moderator. When recognized, you should come to one of the microphones. Please be certain that you speak directly into the microphone so that your comments are clear to all. Please be certain also to state your name and your address at the outset of your remarks each time you speak. I'd invite you now to turn to Article 1. Article 1 asks, "Will the town choose all necessary town officers, including a member of the committee to take charge of the income of the Hannah-Lincoln Whiting Fund, for a term of three years?" The recommendation of the Advisory Committee is set forth in your booklet. It's an affirmative motion that Karen Sadlin of 33 South Pleasant Street be elected a member of the committee to have charge of the income of the Hannah-Lincoln Whiting Fund for a term of three years. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. The motion is adopted. Article 2. Article 2 is one that we have before us each year. The Department of Conservation and Recreation as a matter of policy requires the town to assume certain liabilities. The recommendation of the Advisory Committee is an affirmative motion set forth in your booklets, that the town, in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, assume liability for all damages that may be incurred by work to be performed by the DCR for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the improvement of certain tidal and non-tidal rivers and streams, all as set forth in the recommended motion of advisory. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. Article 3. We hear certain reports of the committees that are set forth in Article 3. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth in your warrant booklet, that the reports so submitted be received, and that all of the committee's reporting be continued, except that the Regional Refuse Disposal Planning Committee be discharged with the thanks of Town Meeting. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. The motion is adopted. Next, we come to Article 4. Article 4 invites us to hear the report of the Personnel Board appointed under the Classification and Salary Plan. There is one scribbler's error in what is before you in the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee. Six lines up from the bottom, in the line beginning several personal services, or actually personnel services. Strike "personal."[1042.58][1042.58](Laughter.) That's for a different meeting. So, the recommended, the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is to receive the report of the Personnel Board, to approve any collectively bargained agreements that have been reached and are embodied or referred to in that report, and to allocate a sum of $370,542 for the purposes of the vote. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. We now come to Article 5. Article 5 also has a slight typographical error that I call to your attention for correction in the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee under "Selectmen," please strike through "at the request of the Board of Selectmen, comma." So, that sentence should correctly begin "Selectmen, colon, at the rate of $2,000 each." So, this is the article that asks, "Will the town fix the salaries of certain town officers?" All this is more particularly set forth in the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. We now come to Article 6. This is our budget article. The recommended, the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth in its report, which begins on page 19 of your warrant booklet. The introductory portion of the motion refers to appropriations for the fiscal year, which will begin July the 1st, 2014. You will find beginning at pages 19, at page 19, a series of pages that run through page 25. Each of these pages contains three columns of numbers. The far right-hand column has the specific appropriations recommended by your Advisory Committee for fiscal year 2015, which begins on July 1, 2014, and ends on June 30, 2015. I've referred to the wrong fiscal year. I apologize. Fiscal '15. With respect to the items under Article 6, as we have done for many years, I will read each amount to be appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, as recommended in each instance by the Advisory Committee. If you would like to raise a question, or an objection with regard to a specific item, or if you would like to propose a higher amount, or a lower amount, or no amount, then, after I have read that item and the dollar amount, please say "hold," so that we will hear you. Then I will mark "hold" next to the item in my book. We'll put the held items aside until we have completed the reading of the whole list, at which point we will take up the items that have not been held, as to which no question has been raised, and we will vote on those items altogether. Then we will go back and take up any item that has been held one by one, and allow discussion, questions and debate, and any alternative motions with regard to any of those items. Before we begin, I invite Greg McKeon, who is the Chair of the Advisory Committee, to
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My name is Greg McKeon. I live at 20 State Coach Road, and I'm the Chairman of the Advisory Committee. Since April 2009, we've endured five years of economic uncertainty, and today, I'm pleased to report we are financially stronger with a more efficient government that is still able to meet the needs and expectations of the town's citizens. To arrive at this point took sacrifice embedded in difficult choices, cooperation grounded in trust and mutual respect, and fiscal discipline supported by sound management, and frankly, more than a little luck. While I think we can say the worst is behind us, we must continue to temper our optimism with caution. The economic recovery remains fragile, and for too many in town, nonexistent. Hingham's recovery has benefited from historically low interest rates, however, rates are likely to increase in the coming years, possibly months. In addition, uncertainty still looms over several components of our financial forecast, including the amount of new growth in the tax base in future years and the amount of state aid we will receive. Despite the financial challenges of the past five years, we have opened a new elementary school, upgraded the high school athletic fields, and later this year, we will celebrate the completion of a new middle school, probably the single largest municipal project in terms of dollars in the town's history. But there are other large products, projects, including modernization of the library, modernization of Town Hall, and upgrades to the fire stations in South and West Hingham that still need attention. In addition, the town must address the infrastructure and services needed to support our older residents. The elderly are the fastest-growing segment of Hingham's population. Addressing the needs of our aging population is a moral imperative grounded in respect for and gratitude towards those who have given so much to create the community we have today. We have an obligation to provide the resources necessary so that, as much as possible, our older friends and neighbors can enjoy their retirement years with dignity in their own homes, in the community that they helped to build and continue to support today. As you've likely heard, the fiscal 2015 budget contemplates tax relief, which is a little bit of a misnomer, because make no mistake about it, your taxes are going to increase. However, the increase will be less than it could have been. Because the middle school cost, will cost less than originally contemplated, which is the result of lower bids, good project management, and lower interest rates, and because of the availability of meals tax revenue, the amount of property tax revenue needed to pay for the middle school is less than we originally anticipated. As a result, the Board of Selectmen, with the support of the Advisory Committee, has determined that it will reduce the increase in taxes allowed by the 2011 debt exclusion. The benefit to the average Hingham homeowner, excuse me, homeowner will be about $180. For some, it will be more, and for others, it will be less. It has been suggested that perhaps those funds could be used for other purposes, such as increasing our fund balance, paying down debt, or addressing outstanding capital requests. The Advisory Committee has considered these possibilities, and while all would be worthy uses of the money, we do not believe there is sufficient urgency to any of those needs to warrant raising your taxes at this time. Specifically, our current fund balance is well within the town's financial policy and consistent with the expectations of the bond rating agencies. Our debt service obligations are manageable, and we have a well-established policy to address capital needs that already includes spending $4 million in fiscal 2015. The ability to provide similar tax relief in future years is dependent on many factors, but the Advisory Committee supports the Board of Selectmen's efforts to lessen the property tax burden whenever possible. For many people, the amount of tax relief is not a lot of money, but it is your money, and we believe that you should be able to keep it. Of the three principal tax burdens that we pay, including federal income tax, state income tax, and local property tax, property tax is the only one that you can directly affect how much to pay and how it is spent. I encourage you to take advantage of that opportunity and to keep a little bit more money in your own pocket. Thank you.
Thank you.[1593.59][1593.59](Applause.)
Mr. Robuffo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bruce Robuffo, One Dwiggins Path, speaking for the Board of Selectmen. Many of you may have read last Friday's articles in the Wall Street Journal that dealt with the issues surrounding this fiscal recovery. They reported that mortgage applications are declining, yet business inventory is beginning to increase. These measures of growth cause pause. As I mentioned in the Selectmen's letter, these factors gave me pause, and I'm sure it gave others that same reservation. No doubt about it, no matter what your party affiliation, this is a different recovery. As Greg has informed you, the budget for 2015 was a joint effort of Advisory and Selectmen. We did gather the needs. We assessed them within the confines of our available revenue and our other obligations, and then we made prudent decisions. Part of our needs assessment was a recognition of future tax impacts on you for the coming years. As he mentioned, we agreed on the need for tax relief, but asked ourselves, what form should it take, given all the other needs today and tomorrow for the town? I should add to this, many of our departments have carefully examined their budget requests, and some, such as the School Committee, have worked diligently to reduce their needs so that they could meet all of the other departments' needs. As you listen to the numbers, understand these numbers are a package that evaluates not only our service needs, but all of the other inputs, including your tax relief. Greg has said we have done this within the confines of managing to our financial policy. Our tax relief articles are outlined in Articles 7, 8, and 9, and 10. I would start by saying we could have easily proposed an underwrite, but that pause I mentioned earlier says, "Do not do anything permanent, because those kinds of decisions as an underwrite impacts us for eternity." What we did do was to give ourselves relief, but we wanted to give ourselves some options for future relief if future town meetings so chooses. We are using the monies, as this slide depicts, from the meals tax of previous years, and some of this year, to give you a tax break in 2015. Yet, we are reserving some monies from the meals tax for 2015. Yet, we are reserving some monies from the meals tax, already collected, for use perhaps in future years, maybe for tax relief, or maybe for some other reason. You will decide that in future years, if that is the course of action. As Greg mentioned, your taxes will go up, but not as much as they could have. Given all the other needs contained in Articles 5 and 6, this is a unique way of doing business. It allows us to deal with the environment we are in. That is important. Yes, we did vote for a bigger tax rise, but we wanted to mitigate that increase by this different approach. The next chart depicts the impact on you. The $155 captures the meal tax components of our proposal. The difference between this number of $155 and Greg’s number of $180 relates to a joint decision of Selectmen and Advisory to not tax you at the maximum rate permitted. By doing that, that created another $400,000 in savings. This approach is different, because the environment we live in is different, but the benefit is to you. So as you listen to all the numbers from Articles 6 through 10, I want you to recognize that they represent a comprehensive solution to next year’s budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robuffo. I will now begin reading the allocations, the proposed appropriations under Article 6, for fiscal 2015, as recommended by the Advisory Committee. Again, if you want to hold a particular line item, call out “hold” in a good, clear voice, and I will mark that matter held. We’ll go through the entire budget this way. We will then vote on all matters that have not been held, and then return to any item that has been held for discussion. Selectmen. Payroll: $441,017. Expenses: $33,290. Capital outlay: $50,000. Reserve fund: $550,000. Town accountant. Payroll: $367,487. Expenses: $12,555. Capital outlay: $131,198. Audit: $55,000. Information technology: $211,543. Assessors payroll: $212,192. Expenses: $11,587. Consulting: $114,800. Map maintenance: $6,000. Treasurer-collector payroll: $315,832. Expenses: $44,308. Tax titles: $10,000. Legal services: $232,000. Town meetings payroll: $2692. Expenses: $28,300. Town clerk payroll: $165,723. Expenses: $7866. Elections payroll: $16,350. Expenses: $18,645. Community planning payroll: $646,311. Expenses: $57,857. Bear Cove Park. Payroll: $16,558. Expenses: $7833. Town hall. Payroll: $212,412. Expenses: $384,087. Capital outlay: $161,750. Grand Army Memorial Hall expenses: $12,589. Capital outlay: $65,000. Police Department. Payroll: $4,701,547, including overtime: $384,812. Expenses: $330,900. Capital outlay: $333,286,922, from available reserves. Fire Department. Payroll: $4,429,231, including overtime: $400,000. Expenses: $387,200. Capital outlay: $90,500. Dispatch services. Expenses: $750,000. Animal control payroll: $51,202. Expenses: $3700. Harbor master payroll: $132,624. Expenses: $50,650. Public safety utilities, emergency water: $364,424. Street lighting: $183,274. Education. School department payroll: $35,924,118. Capital outlay: $648,674. Town engineering payroll: $231,822. Expenses: $31,900. Capital outlay: $112,000. Road building and construction: $300,000. Highway, recreation, tree and park. Payroll: $1,855,504, including overtime of $44,412. Expenses: $413,340. Capital outlay: $466,800. Snow removal: $504,325. Road maintenance: $288,246. Landfill recycling payroll: $460,823, including overtime of $22,295. Expenses: $858,145. Capital outlay: $85,000. Sewer commission payroll: $293,475, including overtime of $22,143. Expenses: $248,585. Capital outlay: $164,500. Engineering: $10,000. MWRA charges: $1,631,764. The Hull Inter-Municipal Agreement: $126,839. That sum of $2,475,163 to be funded from sewer revenue. Health Department payroll: $296,870. Expenses: $22,735. Elder services payroll: $198,625. Expenses: $21,983. Tax work-off program: $60,000. Veterans services payroll: $83,474. Expenses: $4,437. Health imperatives: $2,500. South Shore Women’s Center: $3,500. Library payroll: $1,225,880. Expenses: $280,192. Capital outlay: $143,000. Recreation commission payroll: $84,337. Trustees of the Bathing Beach. Payroll: $17,035. Expenses: $5,825. Celebrations: $11,063. Country club: $2,181,127, such sum to be funded from country club revenue. Debt service: $9,500,765. $4,705,700 excluded from Proposition 2.5. Employee benefits. Group insurance: $6,305,485. Other post-employment benefits. Contributory retirement: $3,845,487. Workers’ comp: $250,000. Unemployment: $30,000. Mandatory Medicare: $714,420. Property and liability insurance, public liability, fire, property damage and the like: $500,000. Claims and incidentals: $10,950. So we have had one hold on the capital line item for police. And I would invite a motion to approve all of the non-held items. Is there a second on Mr. O’Donnell’s motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote, and we come now to return to the capital outlay under 210 on Page 21. Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dennis Friedman, 445 Cushing Street. I propose that Section 210, under Police Department capital outlay, be amended to read, in the parentheses, $72,000 from available reserves. The difference of $214,922 corresponds to the amount listed on Page 70 of your warrant, under the capital plan funding sources, coming from, quote, “fund balance general.” So let me begin by saying that I’m not suggesting any change in the capital amount to be given to the Police Department. It just so happens there are 11 different line items for capital outlay, and this is the one they chose to fund with money from the general fund. Before I go any further, let’s cut through the legal jargon about what’s happening. Under Proposition 2.5, the amount of taxes the town can levy each year is limited. Because of rising costs and population growth, it’s very difficult to provide even a constant level of services within a 2.5 percent cap. The Board of Selectmen and Advisory Committee are recommending that we not use $400,000 of the allowable tax levy as a way to provide tax relief. I’m a believer in tax relief. I think it’s a good idea. I happen to be the person on the Advisory Committee that shepherded the meals tax article when it was presented to you four years ago. But I’m hopeful, once you better understand the situation, you’ll agree that we should use the full levy for important current needs, and to avoid unnecessarily depleting our general fund balance. On Page 5 of the warrant, the report of the Advisory Committee states, “The town is committed to providing for its capital needs within the tax levy or operating budget of the town.” You heard earlier that we’re doing everything in this budget within our financial policies. But in fact, we are not funding all of our capital from the tax levy or the operating budget of the town. We’re funding $214,922 from the general fund. That disturbs me. So, while we have occasionally used fund balance to supplement capital expenditures in the past, I believe it is unprecedented, that means it’s never happened before, to do it without first using our full tax levy. Perhaps this approach would be justifiable if it was being done to cover a one-time need for additional capital. But on Pages 67 through 76, the five-year capital plan for the next two fiscal years only lists more than $12.5 million in projects. While on Page 12, the Advisory Committee’s own forecast shows expenditures of $4.3 million, a shortfall of more than $8 million. Now, we don’t always do all the projects that are on these forecasts and schedules, so let’s say we only did half of them. This year, we did 80 percent. But let’s say we only did half. That would still require more than $2 million additional than is being forecast in the operating budget. And where would that money come from? It would have to be borrowed or taken from available reserves. Tonight’s Articles 8, 9, and 10 provide more than $5 million in tax relief, $1 million over each of the next five years, as a proposal, through meals tax receipts. And I ask, should we be taking money from fund balance to provide even more tax relief, when there are large capital needs expected over the next two years? In addition, wouldn’t it be nice if we had an additional $400,000, the total amount of the tax levy available, to defray costs for a possible purchase of the Hingham Mutual Building, for the rec department and seniors? Not to mention, what I heard earlier, is needed renovations to Town Hall and the fire stations. Some might ask, why get so worked up about $214,922 out of an article that proposes spending nearly $96 million? My answer would be twofold. First of all, we’ve worked too hard to infuse financial discipline into our budgeting process over the past several years, to allow our resolve to weaken so soon. You heard Chairman Robuffo talk about an uncertain future. But even more importantly, here in Hingham, we pride ourselves on building consensus around changes in the way we raise and spend our money. So let me ask you, how many of you have heard about, over the last several months, that we might be provided some tax relief using meal tax revenues? Would you raise your hands? I won’t ask the moderator to rule on that, but maybe about 40 or 50 percent of the people? So let me ask another question. Before you might have read my article in the Journal a month ago about this, how many of you were familiar with the fact that the Selectmen’s and Advisory Committee were intending not to use the total tax levy to provide additional tax relief? Could I see another raise of hands? I think there’s about 10 people just raised their hand. Not to mention the people perhaps buying--
You have one minute.
Thank you. If not using the full tax levy had been publicized, we could have had a meaningful dialogue as to what might be the best way to allocate these funds. Maybe we taxpayers might have opted to pay down excluded debt, which would provide tax relief, or more quickly reach full funding of our pension liabilities. Perhaps if more of us had been aware of the plan before the warrant closed on January 20th, one or more of us would have proposed an article that we might be voting on tonight. As someone who recently completed six years on advisory, I know the long hours many people dedicated to putting together the operating capital budgets. I also know how difficult it is to follow intricacies of the budget without attending many, many meetings. Can open town meeting continue to function effectively if we’re not more fully informed before we vote? I’ve often refrained that town meeting decides. Now that you’re armed with the facts--
Your time has expired.
--I hope you’ll decide wisely. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman, can you read me your proposed amendment again, please?
The only change would be on the line capital outlay in parentheses, the 286,922 would be changed to $72,000.
Thank you. And before proceeding further, is there a second on Mr. Friedman’s motion to amend that line item? Okay? It’s properly before the meeting. Is there a response from Advisory? Mr. Barclay, from the Advisory Committee.
Good evening. Mike Barclay, 11 Cottage Street, on behalf of the Advisory Committee. So you heard in Chairman McKeon’s comments earlier that, at the end of the day, all of these dollars are yours. It’s up to you to choose how you want to spend them. It's up to you to choose how you want to spend them. And that's really all that Mr. Friedman has echoed in his comments. He referenced the concern about pulling money out of the reserves, so, and how that affects our financial policy. What I can say is that, as we sat through our deliberations on this budget, that we tried to strike a good balance between meeting the town's current and future needs while also recognizing that because of investments in infrastructure, the taxes were going up for everybody. And this effort to provide tax relief of the four hundred thousand dollars was to try to give you tax relief now. Mr. Friedman's correct. We could pay down debt, we could invest in capital, we could pay down long-term liabilities. Those are certainly all things that can be done, and that's up to you and us. These are our tax dollars that we're allocating. As far as concern about financial policy and our reserves, we updated our financial policy last fall, as is required. Every three years, we have a financial policy. It's on the town's website under the Advisory Committee section. I encourage you to go there and read through it, because this is how we govern our finances. And we govern our finances with really one key goal in mind. How do we make sure that we maintain our strong triple-A rating? That is where the rubber meets the road for us in many respects. So as it pertains to the reserve ratio, if you go back to two thousand and nine, the reserve ratio had been, had gone down significantly. It stood at just under nine percent. At that time, we were issued a letter by Moody's citing concern about that and that we were put on watch for our rating. Fast forward to today. Today, our reserve ratio stands at eighteen percent. Nearly over twice what it was in two thousand and nine. Now, we revised the financial policy that was originally drafted in two thousand and ten, and at the time it was drafted in two thousand and ten, times were uncertain as they are now. And originally, that policy stated that the reserve ratio should be between fourteen percent and eighteen percent of expenses. Last fall, we revised that and pushed it up to sixteen to twenty percent. So right now, we're right in the middle of our range. Could it be higher? Certainly. We certainly don't want it lower. And based on the latest data that we have across the United States, and it is somewhat dated, it's from two thousand and twelve, but Moody's isn't real quick sometimes with giving us data, the median of all triple-A rated towns in the United States is eighteen percent. Now, we want to keep working and be above that, but as we stand here today, and yes, things are uncertain. When you look at our budget, you have to be concerned about sources of revenue that aren't recurring. New growth, items like that, can go down. But as far as any concern about the reserves being unstable or not having been built up, that shouldn't really be a concern. You never say never about what can happen in the future, but at this point, we have worked hard, we have doubled our reserve ratio in the last four or five years, and this effort to provide immediate tax relief to you was just that. We could have put that money in a lot of different places, one-time places, but this was an effort by the Selectmen and the Advisory Committee to offer you an immediate source of tax relief in the face of what will be higher taxes for fiscal two thousand and fifteen. So again, I would just reiterate, this is your money, and if you agree with Mr. Friedman, we don't have to pull the money for capital out of reserves. But you shouldn't sit in fear that somehow our reserves are in bad shape or at risk or based on the information that we know in any way put our triple-A rating in jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barclay. Is there a further discussion on Mr. Friedman's motion to amend that particular line item of the fiscal fifteen budget? If not, we come to vote on Mr. Friedman's recommended motion that the amount of capital outlay, as recommended by the Advisory Committee in its affirmative motion of two hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-two, be reduced to seventy-two thousand dollars. All those in favor of Mr. Friedman's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
The motion is lost. We now come to vote on the recommended affirmative motion of the Advisory Committee that the capital outlay for the Police Department in line two thousand, two-one-zero, two-hundred-ten on page twenty-one of two hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-two be adopted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Majority carries. The motion is adopted. We now come to Article Seven. Article Seven deals with a stabilization fund. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is that the town appropriate the sum of one hundred seventy-six thousand six hundred twenty-nine from the stabilization fund for the purpose of reducing the fiscal year two thousand fifteen tax rate. As this involves a transfer involving the stabilization fund, it requires for passage a two-thirds affirmative vote. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? More than two-thirds having voted in favor, the motion is adopted. We now come to Article Eight. There is one slight change in the recommended motion of Advisory on page twenty-six, in line six, which begins to reduce the tax rate and to, please strike the words "transfer" and slash "or." So as modified, the recommended motion will read in relevant part, "and to appropriate the sum of six hundred thousand." So the operative verb is "appropriate." So Article Eight, in the recommended motion of Advisory, recommends that the town amend the vote under Article thirty-four of the two thousand and ten annual town meeting in order to designate future meals tax revenue generated under MGL sixty-four L, Section Two, as a local receipt available to reduce the tax rate and to appropriate the sum of six hundred thousand dollars in the upcoming fiscal year to reduce the FY fifteen tax rate. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote.
You won't see me many more times, I promise. Dennis Friedman, four forty-five Cushing Street. So as I mentioned earlier, I was the person on Advisory that was, was--
I'll be back.
--in charge of the meals tax acceptance and then establishing the stabilization fund. And at the time, there was a lot of concern about what we were going to do with this money and how it would be used. And so if you see in the comment, first paragraph, last sentence says, "The intent to give citizens, the intent was to give citizens ample opportunity to control the uses of these funds." That's in the Advisory Committee's comment. So since this only happened three years ago, actually, four years ago, the acceptance and the stabilization fund a year later, it's, I'm kind of surprised that, and we've never actually given any money out of that fund until perhaps later tonight, I'm wondering why we'd want to take that ample opportunity away from town meeting and put this into local receipts. I'm interested to know what, why the thinking has changed over this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone wish to address Mr. Friedman's question? Mr. McCune, Chairman of the Advisory Committee.
Greg McCune, Twenty Stage Coach Road, Chairman of the Advisory Committee. In response to Mr. Friedman's question, the, he is correct. The original intent was to give the tax, the town discretion over how that money would be used. In designing the tax relief proposals that are before you tonight, it was determined that the best way to fund that was through the meals tax revenue. And when we passed the meals tax revenue, it was understood that that money would be used for significant expenditures above and beyond what would be funded from the levy. And I think everybody agreed that the construction of the middle school would certainly fit that description. And in order to allow tax relief to take place, in order for you, for the amount that you would have to pay to build the middle school, for, in order to reduce that, we need to appropriate that money from the meals tax so that we'll, it'll be available in the future. It's a mechanism that we have to do it. I think the Advisory Committee gave this a great deal of consideration as to the Selectmen. We voted for it unanimously. We had public hearings. There was no opposition expressed at those hearings, and I think the Advisory Committee stands by its decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCune. Is there a further discussion or a question? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee under Article Eight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Majority has it. The motion is adopted. Article Nine. Article Nine, the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is that the town reallocate, transfer, and/or appropriate six hundred twenty thousand five hundred thirteen dollars previously appropriated by the vote under Article Thirteen of the two thousand thirteen annual town meeting to the meals tax stabilization fund. This requires for passage a two-thirds majority. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It is a unanimous vote. Article Ten. Recommended motion of the Advisory Committee under Article Ten is that the town transfer four hundred fifty thousand dollars from the meals tax stabilization fund for the purpose of reducing the fiscal two thousand fifteen tax rate, and that the balance of two hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred twenty dollars remain in the meals tax stabilization fund for future tax rate reduction. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. This, too, requires for passage a two-thirds affirmative vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It is a unanimous vote. We now come to Article Eleven. Article Eleven has to do with receipts from the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth in your booklet, that with the exception of five hundred thousand dollars, which is hereby transferred to the general fund to reduce the tax rate, all funds received by the lighting plant during fiscal year commencing July one, two thousand and fourteen to be appropriated to said municipal lighting plant. All this is more particularly set forth in the recommended affirmative motion of the Advisory Committee. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It is a unanimous vote. Article Twelve. Article Twelve is an article that we see each year. Under Massachusetts law, this requires reauthorization annually. It has to do with the Building Department revolving fund. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth in your booklet, essentially providing that the town authorize the continuation of the revolving fund in the Building Department. The amount that may be spent from the fund shall be limited to two hundred fifty thousand during fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. All this is more particularly set forth in the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It is a unanimous vote. Article Thirteen is a similar article. It has to do with the continuation of the revolving fund in the Elder Services Department. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth in your booklet, that the revolving fund of Department of Elder Services be continued, and that the amount that may be spent from the fund in fiscal two thousand and fifteen be limited to sixty thousand dollars. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote on the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee under Article Thirteen. A majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It is a unanimous vote. Article Fourteen. Article Fourteen asks, "Would the town raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to the town's reserve fund for use during fiscal two thousand and fourteen?" The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is as set forth in the supplemental report. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee, which I will read to you, is that the town transfer from available funds the sum of two hundred twenty thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars to the town's reserve fund for use during fiscal two thousand and fourteen. I assume that should be two thousand and fifteen? It is fourteen. I'm sorry. It is fourteen, because we're still in this fiscal year. So it is correct. My mistake. For use during fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. Is there discussion? If not, we come to the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's a unanimous vote. Article Fifteen. "Will the town raise and appropriate from available funds a sum of money for the purchase of mowers and triplexes for the country club?" The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth in your booklet. It's an affirmative motion that the town appropriate a sum not to exceed one hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred eighteen for the purchase of the reference mowers and triplexes, and to meet the appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen would be authorized to borrow that sum under the applicable provisions of Massachusetts general laws, as this requires a two-thirds vote for passage because it involves borrowing. Is there discussion on this? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It is a unanimous vote. We now come to Article Sixteen, which relates to the appropriation, borrowing, or transfer of funds for the purchase of two new fire engines. The recommendation of the Advisory Committee is set forth in your booklet, that the town appropriate a sum not to exceed one million two hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of two new pumper fire engines and associated equipment, and that to meet the appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen be authorized to borrow that sum under the applicable provisions of the Massachusetts general laws. This requires for passage a two-thirds affirmative vote. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommendation of the Advisory Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It is a unanimous vote. We now come to Article Seventeen. Article Seventeen relates to the continuing investigation of the feasibility of the acquisition of the town water company known as the Aquarian Water Company of Massachusetts. The recommendation of the Advisory Committee is an affirmative one, and will be received as the main motion before this meeting. The recommendation of the Advisory Committee is that the town appropriate four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars from available funds to be used by the Board of Selectmen for professional fees and costs, as more particularly set forth in the affirmative motion-- as more particularly set forth in the affirmative motion of the advisory committee, which is at pages, page 31 of your warrant booklet. All this more particularly set forth therein. Is there discussion? Mrs. Power for the advisory committee.
Good evening. Mary Power, One King Philip Path, representing the advisory committee who unanimously supports Article Seventeen. We do so for three reasons. One, the economic opportunity is significant. Advisory has reviewed the cost model and has met with the town's expert witnesses. We think the town's position is strong, and the potential to eliminate $55 to $68 million in cost is real. Two, we are satisfied with the process. The Water Study Committee is made up of five citizens, four of them former advisory committee chairs, each having a track record of distinguished service to the town. The advisory committee has closely followed the work of this committee for two years. It has spent thousands of hours carrying out the charge of the 2012 town meeting in an objective, professional, and high-integrity manner. Members followed the data with no agendas. They are not invested in a particular outcome. Funds have been used judiciously. We expect that will continue. The Water Study Committee participated in 20 open meetings and three town forums. Executive sessions were called when necessary in accordance with Mass. general law. We understand some are frustrated by not having access to certain information, including legal strategy, before tonight's vote. This is not without precedent. Town meeting frequently votes budgets that include collective bargaining allowances. You did so tonight when you voted the education budget. All collective bargaining strategy sessions and negotiations are conducted entirely in executive session, and for good reason, to protect the town's interest. Since we are involved in litigation and do not rule out the possibility of a negotiated settlement, the same caution must be taken. Three, we remain concerned over the stewardship of the water system and water supply under the current owner. We keep hearing about Aquarian's expertise managing water systems, and to this we ask, why didn't Aquarian refinance the 7% water treatment debt sooner? Why didn't Aquarian develop a plan to manage unaccounted-for water sooner? And with 166 emergency system repairs in Hingham alone over the past 10 years, why did Aquarian underspend its 2012 capital efficiency plan by $400,000? Some are concerned the court could set a price that doesn't make sense for the town. The advisory committee is more concerned about what happens if the potential for acquisition goes away, or if the town waivers in any way. Aquarian's cost structure, profit returns to investors, and higher borrowing rates prevent it from adequately maintaining our water infrastructure without significantly raising rates. Aquarian has been owned by Macquarie since 2007. In their first five years of ownership, they petitioned the DPU for rate increases totaling 54%. The DPU granted increases totaling 31%. During that same time, Hingham was cutting municipal services while still having to spend $60,000 to $80,000 to challenge each rate case. When Aquarian tells you that their rate increases are among the lowest in the state, keep in mind they are counting years when they were owned by somebody else. Assuming town meeting approves Article Seventeen, and all monies are spent, the town will have spent a total of $945,000, which is the red bar on the screen. Since initiating this study, Aquarian has refinanced its debt and announced a one-time tax refund. We don't think either are a coincidence. Those savings are the blue bar on your screen. Hingham's share is 61%. Since the refinancing savings carry into the future, we will fully recover what we have spent in less than two years' time. The funding source for this article is our fund balance, which you heard from Mike Barclay earlier, stands at 18%, well within the range of our town financial policy. It's been suggested that this article is diverting funds from the operating budget. It's not. We don't use fund balance to pay for the Article Six budget. So if this study were to go away, we wouldn't be hiring any more public safety officials or any more teachers. In our advisory deliberations, we considered the length and the cost of litigation, the strength of the town's position, and the risk, as one of my colleagues put it, of falling in love with an idea so much that you lose perspective. We also talked about how town ownership would work. On this last point, we agreed that significant
One minute.
...discussion of ownership matters is premature until we get a price, which is what this article seeks to do. We therefore recommend the town continue its efforts to obtain a purchase price. Once that happens, a future town meeting will make the ultimate decision whether or not to buy the water company. One final point. Town ownership makes sense today because we can borrow money for 20% at a 2% rate. While low interest rates are not a reason on their own to move ahead, we can't count on them staying this low indefinitely. As interest rates rise, Hingham's window of opportunity closes. The Water Study Committee, Board of Selectmen, and Advisory Committee all unanimously recommend approval of Article Seventeen.
Mr. Asher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jonathan Asher, Five Common Street, Chairman of the Water Company Acquisition Study Committee. Two years ago, town meeting authorized up to $320,000 to conduct a study of the feasibility and advisability of the town exercising its right to purchase its water company. At that time, Hingham ratepayers had the fifth-highest water rates in the Commonwealth, and there were repeated water main breaks, the infrastructure repair of which was constrained by Aquarian's limited capital budget. After two years, what do we know now that we didn't know then? Well, we've learned five important facts. First, we've learned that Aquarian cannot make significant improvements to our aging water system infrastructure without increasing rates. As you've just heard, since 2007, Aquarian has requested rate increases by the Department of Public Utilities totaling over 54%, and was granted increases over 31%. Aquarian executives have consistently refused to make any commitments to limit future rate increases, and in fact, have signaled their intent to file rate cases every three years. Second, we've learned how Aquarian spends the revenue it receives from ratepayers. In 2012, over $1,600,000 of the money we spent for water ultimately went to Macquarie Bank's private equity shareholders. Aquarian earns over 10% net return for its investors and over a 13% return on its water treatment plant. Those are enviable returns when individual savings accounts now earn less than 1%. We have identified a total of $6,700,000 in Aquarian charges from 2012 that would be eliminated under town ownership. You will hear more about these charges from Ed Siegfried. Third, we've learned what the consequences are of Aquarian's constrained capital budget. Two successive years of unaccounted-for water at 21%, more than one out of every five gallons lost. That figure is over twice the DEP standard, and seven percentage points higher than the average of the 279 water companies in the Commonwealth, over 95% of which are owned by the towns they serve. If unaccounted-for water were reduced just to the Massachusetts average, we would conserve over 84 million gallons of water each year, otherwise drawn from our stressed Weir River watershed. Fourth, we've carefully investigated the work of previous studies, both the 1985 study by the Water Supply Committee and the 2009 CDM study commissioned by the Hingham Municipal Light Plant. The 1985 Water Supply Committee Town Report concluded that savings were not substantial enough to warrant acquisition. That's an understandable conclusion to draw, given the double-digit interest rates in effect in the mid-1980s. With regard to the relevance of the 2009 CDM study, the committee talked with CDM, and CDM sent a letter to the town last December clarifying two facts. First, that their 2009 evaluation reflected the fact that the light plant did not have the statutory authority to acquire or operate a water utility. Second, costs presented by CDM were based on limited information and did not involve discussions with Aquarian representatives. The letter acknowledges that the town's current study has allowed the town to develop a much better understanding of potential acquisition costs and impacts on water rates. That's why the advisory committee omitted any mention of the 2009 CDM report. It wasn't relevant. That CDM letter was posted on the Water Company Acquisition Study Committee's webpage upon receipt. Finally, we've learned that at the right price, were a future town meeting to vote to actually purchase the water company, the town could acquire the water company, invest millions of dollars each year to repair the infrastructure, and repay to fund balance all the money expended in the study and the town's lawsuit. So what about that right price? Well, that's why the town filed its lawsuit last July, to determine the system's acquisition price. Since Aquarian and Macquarie executives have consistently rebuffed the town's offer to negotiate a price. A water utility expert and a nationally-known valuation firm have independently
You have one minute.
derived an acquisition price of $50 million to $60 million. At that price, the town could acquire and significantly improve the system and water conservation using cost savings from $2,600,000 to $3,200,000 per year. We are all aware that there are no guaranteed outcomes. However, our research into previous court decisions, coupled with the informed opinions of experts in the field, convinced me that the potential benefits of a court decision greatly outweigh the cost of continuing the town's lawsuit. The vote tonight is not a vote to buy the water company. That deliberation is only relevant once we know the actual acquisition price as determined by the courts. Two years ago, town meeting made a $320,000 decision to authorize a study based on very limited information. Two years later, we have the facts and have filed a lawsuit to obtain a purchase price. Given those facts and the strength of the town's legal position, I believe that authorization by town meeting to continue the lawsuit is in the best interests of the town and its ratepayers.
Ed Siegfried, 21 Camelot Drive, a member of the Water Study Committee. I want to share with you the work done by the committee in determining the financial impact and the feasibility of a town-owned water company. The objective was to build a financial model comparing the cost of continued Aquarian ownership versus town ownership by year over a number of years. At the outset, we had no predetermined conclusion or agenda. Our work was based only on what the numbers told us, and if they did not make sense, our work would be over. We started this effort 20 months ago, and have spent many, many hours gaining an understanding of Aquarian's cost structure. To do this, we used reports filed with the Mass. DPU, information supplied by Aquarian, and information provided by Aquarian's consultants in their reports. Finally, we held three meetings with Aquarian. We compared financial data and obtained Aquarian's projected rate increases by year to 2022. Our numbers were also reviewed with several experienced financial professionals, and all were satisfied with our projections. The end result is a financial projection in great detail by year from 2015 to 2035, comparing the cost of Aquarian ownership with the cost of town ownership. As you saw in the slide John Asher presented, the cost savings under town ownership are significant, varying only on the purchase price. I want to now review the cost-elimination numbers and how we arrived at the difference between the cost of running a town-owned water company compared with Aquarian's costs. These are the same numbers that I presented at the recent town forum, and also as part of several public meetings of our water committee. First, the charges for Aquarian water delivery to us are currently approximately $12 million annually. This is what we are charged for water. These charges are based on Aquarian's costs approved by the Mass. DPU, plus a profit to Aquarian. Based on the work we have done over the past 20 months, we have identified $6.7 million in Aquarian annual costs that would be eliminated if the town owned the water company. That's $6.7 million out of the total charges of $12 million, or 56%. The next slide, please. The $6.7 million in eliminated costs consists of water treatment plant lease expense, $2.7 million, of which debt service is 1.7, and percent rent is $1 million. The percent rent is pure profit for Aquarian, and will total $30 million over the next 21 years. The return on the rate base, 1.6 million. That's essentially more Aquarian profit. Federal and mass income taxes, $600,000. A town-owned water company does not pay federal or state income taxes. Depreciation, $850,000. Plus the elimination of other expenses, including rate case expenses, corporate overhead expenses, customer satisfaction surveys, rent expense for facilities in other towns, water purchase for resale, all of which add another $1 million in eliminated costs, bringing the total eliminated Aquarian cost to $6.7 million annually. This is a firm number. It is not a guesstimate. No personnel reductions are included in this total. No water treatment costs or quality control costs are eliminated. What is eliminated are Aquarian charges that an investor-owned water company is allowed to charge us for water. Under town ownership, these eliminated charges would be used to, first, fund the purchase price of the water company, plus invest $3 million in year one of capital improvements, which would address in part the 21% unaccounted-for water. All of this would be paid for through 20-year borrowing and recovered through water bills, not through real estate taxes. Second, it would fund $2 million annually in capital for system improvements for the next 21 years. Third, it would be used to repay to the town all expenses incurred in funding the current legal action. Finally, it would be used to add $200,000 annually in new municipal costs, primarily administrative costs, including a billing system and related expenses. After funding all of this, there would still remain a cost-savings difference between town and Aquarian ownership, ranging from $55 million to $68 million over the next 21 years, depending on the purchase price. As was said earlier, we believe the ultimate purchase price will be in the range of $50 to $60 million. The next slide shows an example of what the annual cost savings are in various years, assuming the $60 million price. The top numbers are Aquarian's numbers. They're Aquarian's own numbers. The bottom section shows the costs under town ownership. Based on the expected purchase price, I am confident that a town-owned water company can do two things that Aquarian absolutely cannot do financially. One, produce cost savings of $55 to $68 million over a 21-year period. Money that would be available
You have one minute.
for additional water system improvements or for rate savings. Two, make critical improvements to an old and aging system that Aquarian cannot do without substantial increases in rates far exceeding the rates of a town-owned company would have to charge. As a former CFO of two publicly investor-owned companies, I know all about the pressure to produce profits. I will conclude with one question. Why does Aquarian not want to sell the water company, and why are they working so hard to convince us not to buy? The answer is simple. It is because it is a very profitable business for Aquarian. Aquarian is making a ton of money for its investors selling us our water.
Further discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Mitchell.
Christopher Mitchell, 120 Hershey Street. I move to an amendment to the affirmative act motion of the advisory committee under Article Seventeen. I previously delivered a written copy of this proposed amendment to the moderator, and I would like now, like to move this amendment and ask the moderator, Perusa, to read this to the meeting. Once this motion is second, I would like to explain why this amendment is proposed and what the amendment should accomplish.
I have before me a proposed amendment to the main motion under Article Seventeen, and I will read it. And now, it is what is called a motion to refer, or a motion to commit, and it reads as follows. Voted to refer this Article Seventeen to a committee of the town hereafter described and created, which is directed to study all relevant issues it deems to affect or influence the matters raised in this article. raised in this article, and to report its findings and recommendations to a future town meeting. Such report and recommendation to be in written form, widely disseminated and prominently posted on the town website not less than 60 days prior to such future town meeting. Such recommendations may, in part, take the form of articles for inclusion in the future town meeting warrant. And two, to direct the moderator to appoint a committee of seven citizens of the town, knowledgeable in its affairs and possessing such other knowledge, expertise, or experience as the moderator in his discretion deems useful, one of whom he shall designate as chairman, to be known as the Hingham Water System Future Committee, hereinafter referred to as Committee, and to direct all town boards, other committees, commissions, officers, and employees to cooperate fully and in a timely fashion with the committee, and, upon request, to deliver to the committee accurate copies of all books, records, reports, minutes, communications, studies, opinions of experts, and any similar materials in the possession of or in control of the town, including, without limitation, all materials filed or prepared at town expense in connection with the current litigation between the town and Aquarian Water Company of Massachusetts, Aquarian litigation. And four, to recommend strongly to the Board of Selectmen that it promptly seek either a continuance or a dismissal without prejudice of the Aquarian litigation pending further action by a subsequent town meeting on the report and recommendations of the committee. And five, to direct the Selectmen to make available within the town hall or such other Hingham public building as the committee in its discretion deems appropriate, suitable office and meeting space for its exclusive occupancy, which shall contain such utilities, telecommunications, and similar support services as are generally available in other town offices. And six, that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 for the work of the committee, it being understood that the committee may require clerical and professional services and incur expenses for office equipment and supplies and the like in order to discharge its duties in a professional manner with all due deliberate speed. And seven, that the term of the committee shall expire unless extended by vote of a subsequent town meeting on the earlier to occur of the conclusion of the town meeting to which the committee makes its report and recommendation, or the conclusion of the 2016 annual town meeting. So that is the proposed motion to refer or to commit that has been proposed as an alternative to the main motion under Article 17 as proposed by the Advisory Committee. Is there a second on Mr. Mitchell's proposed motion?
There's a second, so you may now begin, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, like many of you tonight, have been greatly troubled by the closed nature of the process surrounding this very important public policy issue around the future of the Hingham's water supply that had been held to this date. Going back two years, I voted in favor of the feasibility study. I believed that an independent outside experts helped to assist and to assess, to have an open and public forum to discuss these findings, and to have all the documents, both favorable and unfavorable, posted and available for all citizens. But over time, I noticed that this information in detail and in open debate was not coming out the way I'd anticipated and expected. So I went to the town office, and I asked about the water acquisition study, if I could talk to somebody, find out more information. I was pointed to the Selectmen's office, and in the Selectmen's office, I was told that they couldn't comment on the water acquisition study because they were in litigation and the meetings were in executive sessions, so it was closed to the public. I was told that all public documents were on the town's website under the Water Company Acquisition Study Committee. The website contains 11 documents. Seven of them are from the town, four are from Aquarian. Of the seven documents that are from the town, there's only 42 pages. Of the four documents from Aquarian, there are 327 pages. I'm a little bit of an accountant nerd, and I really wanted to find the facts and make sure that this information was there, and to follow up on the suggestions for this information from the Selectmen. Going through the minutes of the Water Company Acquisition Study, I noticed that they had just over eight hours of public meetings, and 14 meetings over two years. We are very fortunate that Hingham Town Government is built around an open meeting afforded to citizens to participate actively in debate and discussion, that have a meaningful opportunity to shape town policies. But this has not been the case to date. This amendment seeks to reverse that closed course and return consideration to such an important and complicated public policy issue in full, to inform public debate for all its complexities. This amendment does several things. It replaces the existing motion. It refers to the subject matter in Article 17 to a committee of the town of study and report to the town meeting. Since its legislative committee reports to the town meeting, not the Selectmen, all of the members are appointed by the moderator, who is heads the legislative branch of town government. The legislative branch has three standing committees: the Capitol Outlay Committee, the Personal Board, and the Advisory Committee, each of which consider and report directly to the town meeting and in various matters for which they are responsible. This committee would address in depth only those issues that surround Article 17. The balance of this amendment strongly recommends, it does not direct, the Board of Selectmen pause litigation. The amendment directs all board committees, commissions, officers, and employees to cooperate fully with the committee. It seeks to provide space and financial resources for the committee so that it can do its job and issue identification analysis, recommendation in a professional manner, and quickly and practically. What this amendment is not about, it does not take sides. Many of the people supporting this amendment do not advocate for Aquarian and do respect the boards of Selectmen and the town office' time and hard work and long hours. Ours is a difference between seeking more open and public response traditionally of what is Hingham's virtue. Forty-two documents, just over eight hours of public forum for this article. So that is why this amendment is in place. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Mrs. Salisbury.
My name is Catherine Salisbury, and I live at 10 Ridgewood Crossing. I have not decided yet whether buying the Aquarian Water Company is a good idea or not. How could I? I do not have enough facts and have not heard enough debate on the subject to render an intelligent decision. I suspect many of you here tonight feel the same way. There has been no consensus on this issue, and voters suspect that there are other issues besides price that have not yet been addressed or debated. This being so, why are we so far down the litigation track? Why has the money appropriated by Article 19 at the 2012 annual town meeting been spent for consultants to establish what they think the town's price should be and for lawyers involved in the litigation? This issue is too important not to have thought through all the issues. This has not been done so far. I was the chairman of the Water Supply Committee when it obtained $50,000 from the 1984 town meeting to do a study to examine the present and estimated future demand for water, the adequacy of existing and potential future water sources and existing treatment and delivery systems, the cost-effectiveness of the current public utility, which at that time was the Hingham Water Company, and providing water service to the town, possible alternative water supply strategies, including the purchase or taking by the town of the existing public utility, and recommending to the town action to secure adequate future water service. We hired consultants who produced a written report. We held a public hearing at which that report was presented, questions asked, and comments received. The committee concluded that a treatment plant was necessary and voted against advising the town to pursue the acquisition of the Hingham Water Company. Our written report is found in the 1985 annual report. While all this history may seem irrelevant to the current discussion, and while the construction of the water treatment plant in 1996 alleviated many of the water quality problems that my committee was concerned with in the 1980s, many problems remain today that would become the town's problems if it acquired the water company. For example, how much will it cost to rectify the undocumented water loss of 21%? How can the critical problem of our current demand bumping up against our statutory limit on water withdrawal of 3.5 million gallons per day be solved? How significant is the fact that 45% of the mains in Hull and 14% in Hingham were installed before 1920? What should our negotiating position with the towns of Hull and Cohasset be, considering that we are proposing to bear the entire burden of the litigation and acquisition ourselves, and the source of supply lies entirely within the geographical limits of Hingham? How can such an important intermunicipal agreement be currently in negotiations with officials in these towns without the draft document being public and without public input from the voters in all three towns? How will future water sources be developed in order to allow future development such as in South Hingham? I presume that you are interested in the answers to these questions. These issues are too important not to have a special legislative committee appointed by our town meeting tonight to study them. This amendment will allow a legislative committee to have the resources to study the facts and reach its own conclusion. Its deliberation in an open forum will enable residents to be apprised of these facts.
You have one minute.
There will be no shroud of secrecy over its deliberations. Informed voters will be empowered, if they have identified the issues, know the facts, and have an opportunity to ask questions and engage in public debate. Don't voters deserve that? This is the one opportunity you have as voters tonight to demand these rights. If you do not, at the end of the litigation, you will be asked at a future town meeting to vote on whether to acquire Aquarian, and you will have no more facts than you do now. How can you then make an intelligent decision? The Board of Selectmen's policy of utilizing the litigation exception to the open meeting law is an abuse of that exception, but you cannot expect that policy to change if this litigation fueled by an additional appropriation tonight is allowed to continue.
Your time is up.
I urge a yes vote on the offered amendment. Thank you.
Mr. DeWalter.
Mrs. DeLauder. DeWitt DeLauder, 300 High Street, Hingham.
You speak directly into the microphone, please.
DeWitt DeLauder, 300 High Street, Hingham.
Thank you.
Like many here tonight, I'm disturbed by the closed process, shielded by litigation that the Selectmen have chosen to adopt to consider the future of the town water supply. If the motion under Article 17 passes unamended, the Selectmen will continue as before and spend almost $1 million to determine the price of buying the water company. No one knows what the price will be. Town officials seem to tell us that it's going to be somewhere between 50 and 70 million bucks. The water company feels it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $180 million. In each case, that's a lot of money. Purchase price, however, is just the beginning of the capital expenditures. The water company records indicate that almost half the mains in Hull are about 100 years old. In Cohasset, a third of the mains are also of that same age, and in Hingham, about 14%. Currently, the water company loses, the water system loses 20% of the water pumped from the ground, which does not go through the end user's meters. 20% of a scarce resource where system average are supposed to be much lower. The result is not surprising, given the age of the system. The needed fix is going to be a big, huge capital infusion for infrastructure and refurbishment to make it right. Town officials are quick to point out that the borrowing costs are dirt cheap. True enough, but capital always must be repaid, and historically-low interest rates can rise rapidly and provide nasty surprises when it comes time to refinancing. Hingham for many years has had a policy that the debt service should not exceed 5% of the annual town operating budget. Several years ago, that target was raised to 7.5. The projected ratio for the upcoming fiscal year is almost 11% without any water-related capital expenditures and in a temporary environment of dirt-cheap interest rates. Hingham is like a large family. It must live within its means and cannot have everything that some family members want. We deal with that in our own family budgets every day, when the kids want this and that. Support of this amendment. Open up the process. Let the committee of the town sort things out for all of us, so that a fully-informed future town meeting can make wise choices based on a full citizen discussion and participation. Thank you.
Recognize voter in the rear. Please come to a microphone, convenient.
Henry Heidel, 63 Guilford Road. I look at this proposed amendment.
Just get close to the mic.
I don't want to become intimate with it.
That's okay. They won't hold it against you.
Thank you. My name's Henry Heidel, 63 Guilford Road. The issue before us in the proposed amendment to the main amendment is a smokescreen if you listen to the questions that have been asked by Mrs. Salisbury. The questions which she has asked, I asked recently in a meeting, in a forum, in which a number of Hingham committee chairmen were present, including John Walsh of the Water Company. And the question I asked, you can't answer in the two years that she has suggested $100,000 would solve. The issue we face as a town is correct. We have a long-term issue with water. We have had study committees, obviously, forever. We have had a committee that's determined that the Weir River watershed is stressed, which is our principal watershed, and nobody's come up with the answer to how much water we have available and what population will it provide sufficient water for within the town. The issue that this town has to address has nothing to do with water alone. It has a lot to do with how much development can we have in this town, what will our water resources support, and as you go far afield to get more water to support the growth in this town, what really happens is that cost of water becomes very significant. The further you have to move water to support the economic interests and the population... The further you have to move water to support the economic interests and the population of this town, the more expensive it is going to become substantially. I am a hydrogeologist. I guess that's a lot like being a dentist. You don't actually know what's going on in your mouth. Well, we drill holes in the ground, and sometimes we guess. The other, I spent a number of years a senior planner to the Department of Natural Resources, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I was the author of the Charles River Basin Study, which addressed this very issue. I have been a water consultant for 45 years, running a global consultancy in water, and just spent the last seven and a half years living in Bombay, India. I can describe water problems to you, but the most important thing you have to realize is that do not confuse Mrs. the proposed amendment with the acquisition of the water company. These are two different universes. The things this town needs to know about its resources is driven by the knowledge of how many cubic meters in our aquifer are available to us to draw on, can support what population, and what kind of zoning is required to maintain the growth of this town in concert with the resources available to support this town. If you think you can answer that with 100 grand in a budget and with two years of study, you're nuts. That's all I can tell you. You're nuts. I do this for a living, and sometimes this takes a half a decade, sometimes it takes a decade, to understand the environmental issues that drive the decisions we have to make. The issue of whether we should purchase this water company, I have clients who are both public and private water companies. I owned one of the largest water companies in Australia, the home of Macquarie, which happens to own Aquarian. Lesson and point, Aquarian is the owner of the Charleston, West Virginia Water Company. 300,000 people had a contaminant of unknown character driven straight through the entire distribution of that city's water system. So please don't tell me that we're necessarily better off having a public company whose profit-driven motives prevent them from spending money or participating in certain types of activities which they should do. But I will tell you that this amendment is a smokescreen. If you're going to do this business correctly, we just heard three excellent presentations from the Water Study Committee of very talented people. These are not novices. They understand finance.
You have one minute, sir.
I'm done. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ross. I'll get you next.
That's a very tough act to follow. Let me just say at the outset that it's such a privilege to come to town meeting and be able to address these kinds of issues.
Speak right into that mic, please.
I never take it for granted. Nelson Ross, 18 Bradford Road, Hingham. I believe it's important that we purchase the Hingham Water Company if it is at all feasible. I want to say that I have no obligation on this issue to the Board of Selectmen, to the Advisory Committee, to the Water Study Committee, or any political candidate. I have not spoken with any of them. No one influenced me in my thinking in regard to this issue, except my wife, Barbara, who 40 years ago said, Nelson, we're going to run out of water. We should be investing in a water source. And I ignored her. Big mistake. Okay. The major focuses of those who have spoken in support of the acquisition have been primarily financial and concern about Aquarian and their performance. That is not my focus. I come at it from a different perspective. First, some facts which I think are indisputable. First, clean, high-quality drinking water is essential to our way of life. Second, we do not have an unlimited supply of this critical resource. Third, there are water shortages and drought being experienced already in parts of the United States. How about a community on the east coast of Massachusetts? Let me quote from one study which I did read, authoritative study on the effect of climate change on water scarcity. Quote, "As sea levels rise due to climate change, coastal communities could lose up to 50% of their freshwater supplies. Saltwater intrusion of freshwater aquifers is an essentially big threat to drinking water supplies along the U.S. eastern seaboard, a situation driven by rapid population growth and overpumping of groundwater in coastal communities and exacerbated by rising sea levels." I believe it is imperative that we take control of our water supply and water company assets if it is at all feasible. We need to do this in our own interests and in the interest of future generations in Hingham. I do not want the fate of our community in the hands of some company executive who is thousands of miles away from Hingham, someone we do not even know, someone who is not invested in our welfare, someone whose primary obligation is to his or her shareholders. I do not want that person deciding our future with regard to this essential resource. I believe that it would be a serious error, one that we would regret, if this substitute motion passes. That vote, in my view, could threaten, if not torpedo, the possible acquisition of the Hingham Water Company. Others can speak more knowledgeably than I about the impact on the court proceedings and whether or not the ultimate price could even rise. It is critical that we continue the legal process which is underway to get an answer to the question, what is the price we need to pay to buy the Hingham Water Company? Once we know the price, we can at least determine whether or not it's not feasible. If it might be feasible, then there are many other questions that need to be answered, and I have no doubt they will be. So if you believe, as I do, that we must take control of our water resource for the sake of our future and for the sake of future generations, please vote against the substitute motion and in favor of the main motion. Thank you very much.
The motion to, for the previous question would end debate. It is up to the moderator when to entertain the motion for the previous question. I will do so at such time as the debate becomes repetitive or there are not other voters who wish to be recognized. I am not disposed at this time to entertain the motion for the previous question.
Al Inglehart, 96 Martins Lane. I've read this amendment several times. I've heard it read, and I listened to several dissertations favoring this. I really believe, from the first time I read it, that it was more of a form of obfuscation and a delaying tactic that would kill the progress that we've done so far. If you read on page 11, just a summary, advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen unanimously support this article, they've spent many months. System-wide elimination of $41 to $80 million in the first 21 years of a loan if the town owned the system. I think that the case has been made that, in my opinion, that this amendment is not the way to go. And I will just give you one personal account of my relationship with Aquarian several years ago, when we had a severe drought and there were signs all over, and Aquarian was saying, don't run your water, don't irrigate your lawn, and I believe they even gave a telephone number to call. So my wife and I were taking a trip, a little scenic view up to Otis Street, and then up to view the harbor, and there was water running down the streets from all the irrigation. So I made a phone call to Aquarian. I got an answering machine in Connecticut, and I never got a reply back. Enough said. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening. My name is James Connolly of 37 Elm Street, Hingham, and I am on the Town Water Supply Committee, but I do not speak tonight for that committee. From 1987 to 2007, I dealt with the water company's rates and services, its securities, and, in fact, with the establishment of the treatment plant when I was general counsel and later commissioner and chairman of the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities, then known as the Department of Telecommunications and Energy. I rise to urge passage of this amendment and the pause that it would make for a second opinion about taking Aquarian's water works. A pause is called for because the requested $475,000 would start to push the startup, the mere startup costs of this whole venture closer to $1 million. The meter is going to continue to run on this, and the tab will quickly mount. I'm afraid also that you won't get much more information to judge future funding requests, and there will be future funding requests for this litigation. Public meetings and open discussions are largely foreclosed by the town's legal complaint filed that day, July 3rd, just before the long 4th of July weekend last year. That complaint triggers exemptions from the public meeting and freedom of information laws, and the transparency of public business has really been trumped for this pending litigation. I think in many ways what you're getting here, we saw a lot of facts and figures and applause for it on the dais up here, but what you're really paying for, I think, with this, with passage of this main motion is essentially a pig in a poke, and the price of this is going to increase over the years. If you look at page 30 of your warrant, it suggests a wide gap in the value of the utility plant that seems to range from $114, maybe up to $140 million. To me, that's a sure sign that the trial and appeal will be long and will be expensive far more than people think. Other towns, other towns have followed this road, have gone down this very road, and found it was a lot rougher than they expected it or were led to believe it would be. A first unhappy example, the town of Stowe wanted to buy the electric distribution plant that served that town, but was owned by the Hudson Municipal Light Board. Stowe's request that the DPU value of the property was litigated throughout much of the 1990s, right up to the Supreme Judicial Court in the Stowe Municipal Light case, which you'll find at 426 Mass. 341, a 1997 case. Second, the town of Grafton got sticker shock back in 1984 when the appeals court upheld a verdict for an additional $5.6 million in Grafton's taking of the water company property of Mass. American. There's a Mass. American case on that you'll find at 36 Mass. Appeals Court, 944. Third, last December, just this past December, the town of Oxford's takeover ran into more judicial sticker shock as an additional $2 million was tacked onto the price they expected. Finally, closer to home, although it was a long time ago, Hingham once in the past attempted to rewrite the 1879 Charter Act and was halted by a 1938 SJC decision advising the legislature that had violated the state and Massachusetts constitutions. These examples, what do they say? They don't say much about the disputes that are sure to arise over governments in this multi-town utility that's envisioned in the future. That's a large question that is really going to be a difficult one to deal with. It's not part of the litigation. But what's the takeaway lesson here? I think the takeaway lesson, and it's the one that I would draw from having been involved in a number of these cases, and it's not a smokescreen. I drink this water. I use it every day. So smokescreen, you know, don't listen to that. That's just pejorative. I think the takeaway lesson is litigation risks pricey surprises that the partisans of legal action either do not see-
You have one minute.
... or won't acknowledge. DPU process was recently strengthened by an amendment that our senator and our state rep put in that allows the AG to intervene in water cases, and a taking of the company would nullify that before it even has a chance to work. So I would say this, the proposed amendment allows a pause and nothing more for evaluating the course. Nothing's lost by a pause. Aquarian will still be here for the taking. So tonight, before you pay your next property tax bill two weeks from now, or two days from now, think what the library or the kids' teachers or the police or fire department could do with that money rather than shoveling it into legal fees. I urge you to take this pause and to vote for the amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Beerworth.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Beerworth, 36 Parkview Drive. Speaking tonight as a member of the Water Company Acquisition Study Committee, but I was not an original member of the committee. In fact, I was asked to join the committee when one of the members needed to step down after some months that the committee had been deliberating. Frankly, at the time, I was not looking for any additional work, any opportunity to serve on a town board or committee, but it's an interesting and important issue for the town, and that was attractive. But also, I was drawn to serve on the committee by the caliber of the people who I knew were already serving on the committee. I knew that we would be well-led by John Asher, who I've always found to be a fair and impartial board member when I served with him on advisory. I knew that we would be guarded, guided by an analysis of the facts and not by any ideology or emotion. I knew that the committee members had the experience to provide the best advice possible to the town. The questions that I asked before joining the committee were whether the board, in fact, would be independent, and I was assured that it was. My expectations had been borne out by my time serving on the committee. Our chair, Mr. Asher, is fond of saying that what we have done is looked for showstoppers. Whether those showstoppers arose in the context of the price, governance, operations, we have studied these issues. We've studied these issues as far as is reasonable to study them at this time, not knowing what the purchase price is going to be. If we found an insurmountable impediment on any of these issues, we would have been happy to report back to town meeting to that effect and gone home. That would have been it, but we haven't found those. What we have done, as you've seen, is the opposite. We've been guided by Mr. Siegfried and his analysis of the anticipated savings and the purchase price. That analysis has been roundly supported by the analysis that we've received from expert consultants on these issues, on valuation and on water issues in general. We have examined the statute and the case law in all the cases cited by the last speaker, and those cases guide us toward believing firmly that our legal analysis is the right one and that the purchase price that we have set is likely to be the purchase price that the town will find. That's why we recommend moving forward with the litigation. In the end, what we did was we invited the advisory committee and the selectmen to meet with us in executive session. They had the opportunity to hear our litigation strategy and a report from our experts, and as you've heard, all of them, 23 people on three committees, voted unanimously to support the recommendation. I did want to say one quick word on the executive sessions that we have held. Obviously, there is an exception to the open meeting law, and it's there for a purpose. There was an indication in the local newspaper recently- There was an indication in the local newspaper recently that the executive session exception was only available if there was active pending litigation. Well, that's not the case. The statute doesn't say that, and in fact, there are opinions from the Attorney General and opinions in case law that stand for the opposite proposition. So, if a municipal board or committee is faced with threatened litigation or can reasonably anticipate that litigation is in the offing, it's entitled to meet with its legal counsel and, in a case as complex as this, to meet with its experts, to form a litigation strategy, and it may do that in executive session. That's all we did. That was the rational and prudent thing to do. In fact, I would think we would be criticized if we didn't do that. We're entitled to get that candid and frank advice from our legal counsel in executive session. On this amendment, again, not trying to be disingenuous, but I just don't see what a new committee could do that we have not done. It's not certain, in fact, that we could obtain a stay in the business litigation session in Superior Court where this case sits now. If we did and then tried to reactivate the case on a later date, it's not certain that we could get the expedited schedule for discovery that we have asked for and which the court has granted, which was designed to save the town money in litigation expenses. It would add a level of uncertainty and cost and delay that I don't believe is warranted. Plus, it would send absolutely the wrong message to Aquarian in the middle of a litigated matter. The bottom line to me is that there's no reason for that delay or that additional cost by pushing this out later on. The time is ripe now for getting this declaration from the court. If we get a declaration of purchase price that is beyond what we think is reasonable, we don't need to act on it. So, that's what we are seeking from the court. In the end, this is a risk-reward type of analysis. We've just voted a budget of $100 million. We're asking for an appropriation of $470,000. It can't be used for other purposes, as Ms. Powers indicated. We understand it's a significant sum, but the potential reward to the ratepayers is astronomical, and we think that it's a wise use of town funds to get that declaration now and not upend this litigation. Thank you.
Edna English, 36 Gardner Street. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the Board of Selectmen, ladies and gentlemen. I support the motion, the amendment, because I believe that the magnitude of this decision to acquire the water company and its cost, which is somewhere between 50 and 180 million dollars, we really don't know the price, although the excellent presentations that have been made certainly lead us to believe that it's less than 184. I think that the complexity also of the issue is, calls for a second opinion from an independent committee appointed by the moderator. Ours is, I think, a reasonable approach. It does not stop the court case. We wouldn't want to do that. It does not cut off funding to continue work on the issue. When I have attended an information session given on this just two weeks ago, I heard the Chairman of the Selectmen say that they were working on drafting an intermunicipal agreement, and I was alarmed at that. I couldn't help thinking that the train had left the station, it was barreling down the tracks, and we didn't know whether we wanted to be on board or not. So, I think that there's a lot more that we need to talk about. The Selectmen's group has spent nearly a half a million, and now they would like to spend another half a million on consulting services. The court case, when it comes in next year, will probably mean that there'll be an appeal, and after the appeal, there will probably be additional legal services. So, as other people have said, the 475,000 that's being requested really is only one step along the way. So, it's not hard to imagine a bill that would reach $2 million, after which we may have spent so much money that it would be very hard to turn back. In other words, the point of no return, so I don't want that to happen. I think right now is a good opportunity to take a break in the sense to just to stop a little bit, slow down, not stop completely, but to slow down and to take a look at where we are and if we really want to continue to buy the company. Because even if a business plan can be shown, and no one does a business plan better than Ed Siegfried, even if a business plan can be shown that it is feasible, there are other issues. For example, there's the governance issue. When we talk about governance, we are talking about the multi-town governance, it would be a water board, we would be a water district, and we would then be partners with Hull and with Cohasset, and the board that would supervise this would be, we would have to make decisions along with them. So, it would not be a Hingham-run administration as it is with the Hingham Light Plant. It would not be at all like that. So, those are issues that I think need to be, need to be ironed out and talked about. What would happen if there were disputes, as there certainly would be between the different communities? How would we work that out? Would be more litigation and more legal expense. I worry about that. Now, supporting this motion does not disparage the excellent work that has been done by the five-member Selectmen's Committee. They've done excellent work. They certainly identified problems with Aquarian. The water company changed its management, it changed its policies, and they have certainly improved that. We're grateful for that, and we credit them for having done that. So, I also want to emphasize again, we do not want to stop the process. We do want to have another look by an independent group of people appointed by the moderator, and they would also have $100,000, which is not an insignificant sum, to continue the work of proceeding with finding out what the purchase price would be. And as we know, the Selectmen are always able to arrange, as they did this year, an additional 150,000 for legal expenses. So, the difference, I think, would be more accountability and more transparency, because I feel, as an individual who tries to pay attention, that I just don't know enough and that we've gone a little too far. Other issues that we would need to talk about and that we hope another committee would talk about...
You have one minute.
Okay. Such things as outsourcing water quality and whether it would be more efficient than having the company do it. Debt load. The town should definitely consider the purchase of the water company in the context of all the other demands that are on the budget. We have many things that are waiting in the wings. Would it crowd out more essential services, essential capital expenses? So, I hope you will agree that a second opinion from an independent group of people appointed by the moderator with funding, not stopping the process of looking for the price, would be a prudent and sensible thing to do for this town, for this town meeting body to make a decision on. We believe our approach is reasonable and sensible, and we hope you'll vote yes on the amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan and Mrs. Salisbury.
John Ryan, 175 Otis Street. I'm here, first of all, it's great to follow Edna English. She's a hard act to follow, but I would like to say I come at this from two perspectives. The first is, in my earlier years in my service to the town, I was a member of the Advisory Committee and Chairman one year, and I have a great deal of respect for the opinions of the Advisory Committee, and I know that this issue has been studied very, very deeply by them. I'm also very impressed by the, Mr. Asher's committee, the work that they've done. My current position is as Chairman of the Hingham Electric Light Plant, and I can tell you my tenure there that having the town in control of a critical utility, in my opinion, is a very, very advisable situation and that we should do everything in our power to take control of our water future. And I have every reason to believe that the problems that everybody has outlined here that are attendant to the current infrastructure can be handled much better by the town than they can by Aquarian. The electric light department probably saves the ratepayers in this town a couple of million dollars a year because we don't ship money to Wall Street. We have probably better service than any utility around, and I would expect that if the town takes control of the water system, that it, after a catch-up period, that they could run it in the same efficient and reliable way. I think putting this off for two years is just going to do what an earlier speaker has said, is going to cost us time in the court and is going to push this thing onto the back burner. What we're trying to find out is what this is going to cost us, and then we can make an informed decision. And yeah, a million dollars is a lot, and maybe it'll cost a little more than that, but if we can save anything like the numbers of 2 to 3 million a year that are advertised, increase the reliability of the system and ensure us long-term stability by owning the system ourselves, I think we're miles and miles ahead, and we should just continue down this path, figure out what it's going to cost, and then we can make that decision. Simply referring it to a study committee is tantamount, in my opinion, to killing it. So, I hope we can vote to continue the process. Thank you.
You've been at this for about an hour and 10 minutes. Is there a voter who wishes to add something that perhaps we have not heard previously?
Bill Salisbury, 10 Ridgewood Crossing. Mr. Moderator, friends and neighbors, I urge you to adopt the amendment through Article 17. I think that maybe, first of all, it's a pretty, I'm not easily intimidated, but it's easy to be intimidated by the group of people who are supporting the main motion tonight. Many former Chairman of the Advisory Committee, Nelson Ross, a towering figure, others. I think perhaps Joe Beerworth said it best, though, when he said, "Well, we had several meetings in the executive session with the Advisory Committee and with the Selectmen, so we figured out it was okay, and it may well be." But the fact of the matter is, those are the only 23 people in the town who have any idea what's going on. The rest of it, for better or for worse, has all been hidden behind this litigation shield. So, none of us are able to effectively analyze what the facts might be, and I believe that the important issue is not what the cost is, but all the other questions that remain unanswered. Those, I think, are the really difficult questions. I certainly agree with everybody who says that we ought to get control of our water resources. I think that's a great idea. The problem is that somebody else already has control of our water resources, and it's not Aquarian. It's the Department of Environmental Management, I'm sorry, Department of Environmental Protection who issues water quotas, and we have our water quota, and it's 3.6 million gallons, and it's shared by all of Aquaria's customers, which is all of Hingham, all of Hull, and a little bit of Cohasset. And so, I think what we need to understand is all of the other things besides what the price might be. Do we really want to displace Aquaria? Who cares what Aquaria thinks? What do we think? Do we understand how the system would work? There is sort of an implicit implication that there would be some sort of an intermunicipal water board. In fact, I'm told that a draft, intermunicipal agreement has already been drafted and shared with at least one town and maybe two. I'm also told that perhaps only one, in order to comply with the open meeting law, maybe only one of the three Selectmen could actually read it and analyze it. I don't know if that's the case, but that's the kind of thing that troubles me. Nobody but maybe 23 people know what the facts are. I have the greatest respect for the financial analysis this committee has done. The only problem is, they're all imaginary numbers. I used to work for a company that had developers come and ask for capital, and I have never, ever, ever seen a developer's pro forma that didn't say it was going to be a great deal. If the numbers don't work, you just change the assumptions a little bit. Now, I don't think Edna's crew did that, I really don't, but there's an awful lot of speculation and unknowns in this. And it's been very easy, I think, and maybe it's just, you know, maybe it was on advice of counsel to hide behind the litigation shield. All these questions that I've been talking about tonight, none of them are legal issues. They're all policy questions, and in an open system of town meeting, policy questions have to go through a process where people, us voters, get to listen, get to have all the facts, get to have all the proposals before us, before we reach a decision as to what we, the town, at town meeting, want to do about the issue before us. I'm really sort of troubled that somehow or other, a draft intermunicipal agreement, which supposedly defines this tri, this multi-town body and somehow sets out how it's going to be governed, is sent to another town before people in this town have a chance to consider it and come to a policy judgment about whether that's what we want to do. Believe me, the intent of this amendment is not to...
You have one minute.
...kill it or to help the water company. The intent is for us to figure out what's going on and then make a rational decision based on all the facts, just not the facts that the 23 see fit to share with us. So, I would urge you to vote for this amendment. Thank you very much.
I'm watching the clock, too. Tom Carey, 1131 Main Street. I saw a report somewhere recently that one reason blood pressures are so high in the United States is that they get taken in doctors' offices, and just being there makes your blood pressure go up. I see a lot of that in my work. I'm a litigator, I'm an attorney. My firm engages in litigation. I specialize in cases in front of the Supreme Judicial Court. The way it's being talked about tonight, it's a boogeyman to scare the daylights out of you. Well, it's not that bad. One of the references was to someone who got a terrible surprise, having taken a light plant by eminent domain and then was told what the price was going to be that they had to pay. Hingham's not that idiotic. We have a statute which provides a court mechanism to find out the price ahead of time, so that's what we did. How fast can we get it done? We started in the Supreme Judicial Court, the highest court of the Commonwealth. As expected, they remanded it downstairs for the fact-finding to go on, but we've got a placeholder up there. We'll be back there lickety-split, and in the meantime, in the Superior Court, we are in the business litigation system. Sorry to talk inside baseball, but that's the fastest... Sorry to talk inside baseball, but that's the fastest session that the great trial court of Massachusetts gives you, and we've got a speedy discovery. Where does all the money go? It doesn't all go into lawyers' pockets, I can guarantee you that. The mechanism for establishing price requires expert valuation and a lot of numbers. This isn't gonna be a pro-pharma bill. We're gonna have the real numbers to talk about, and we will have a court decision. So what is involved in buying the light plant? I think we can all agree that price is an important part of that, and that the only way to get Aquaria either to the table to give us a price or to determine the price in advance before we have to open our own wallet is this litigation. So it's the right way to go to determine price. I think we're being sold a false dilemma here. I'm in complete agreement with Edna that every one of the issues that she has addressed here today in her article and that others have raised are all issues that the town must and should decide before we're asked to vote to buy the water company. Tonight's not the vote to buy the water company. Tonight is, what's the best way, as a town, to continue the analysis of this complex question? I remind you, Edna remembers well, that we were in litigation with another big outfit for over a decade, when we fought the MBTA tooth and nail all the way. There is no question that the effect of holding firm in that litigation has a great deal to do with why we have a Hingham Square still with a tunnel under it and that we didn't sacrifice that precious asset. No one likes to litigate, except people like me who do it for a living. But sometimes, if you want to vindicate your rights and proceed in a prudent manner in how you're handling your affairs, you must go to court to get a definitive answer. The false dilemma is the thought that it's one or the other. I think, and I think the advisory committee and the selectmen understand this, that this motion is to go forward with the case, and in the meantime, as a town, let's continue to study each and every one of these issues. That's not gonna cost a lot of money. God knows, we don't have to create five of these paragraphs to deal with where the offices of this new committee is gonna be.
You have one minute.
So in the time between now and the next year or two, the selectmen and the advisory committee should get the extra experts needed to look at all of these other issues and continue work so we're not hurrying at the end. And if we need a group of independent individuals appointed by the moderator, we've got an advisory committee. Thank you.
Peter? We'll hear Mr. Strathopoulos first.
Peter Strathopoulos, 17 Volusia Road. This amendment came as a little surprise to me today, and I support it, all right? But I support it for the reasons of what's happening with these discussions. One is, of the last eight meetings of the Acquisition Study Committee, six of them were executive sessions. One was for 17 minutes to discuss a draft report to the town meeting. God, did he come up with it in 17 minutes? The other was on June 25th, 35 minutes. So I wondered, there's so many different things. Mr. Rabufo has quoted a thing that we spend 950-some-odd dollars based on some state figures per household here. Aquaria says it's $733. Well, there's a big difference, and one of the questions that I would ask is, how much of that is amortization of the current plant that would stay in there? Now, we have two figures that are running around, and the opportunity is, we don't have it to ask the questions. Another question that comes up is, the town runs it, the DPU doesn't audit our rates, go over our rates, which they do for Aquaria right now. And, you know, the executive session protects town interests. At this point, I do not buy, because there should have been a lot more that should have been broadcast. As far as I'm also concerned, Cohasset and Hall, oh yeah, they support us. Well, show us the money. If it's one-third or whatever it is, why aren't they kicking in that money for this no-show-stopper approach? I mean, this is just a lot of unanswered questions, and whether 100,000 is enough or not, but I support this Article 17 based on all the discussions of the people that support it. I have not heard anything against it, saying we're studying too much or whatever. So I had a lot more prepared to talk about, but everybody else seemed to talk about. As a former internal auditor, I am concerned what's happening here, and we're saying to town, I don't have the full confidence that we have the proper checks and balances within the town. And I, you know, I guess as Edna stated, the committee would still do its work, but this is an oversight committee. So that's all I have to say.
Motion has been made for the previous question. Is there a second?
Yes.
The purpose of the motion for the previous question, as I adverted to earlier, is to end dispute. If you wish to end dispute, to end debate... To end debate, if you wish to end debate, you will vote in favor of the previous question. If you wish to hear additional debate, you will vote against the previous question. So the motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor of the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It is virtually unanimous vote. The ayes have it, and we will now proceed to vote on the proposed amendment. So again, the main motion came from the advisory committee. It was a motion proposed to refer the matter, that is, the subject matter of Article 17, to a different committee to be appointed by the moderator, rather, as I read earlier. So if you want to vote in favor of that motion, you will vote aye. If you want to vote against it, you will vote no. And this requires for passage a majority vote. If this vote is affirmative, this will effectively be substituted for the main motion, and the matter will be referred to the aforementioned committee. So all those in favor of the motion that was put forth by Mr. Mitchell to refer this matter to a committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It is clear that the noes have it. The motion is lost. We now return to the main motion under Article 17, as made by the advisory committee. It is set forth on page 31 of your warrant booklet. All those in favor of the recommended motion of the advisory committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Majority has it, and the motion is adopted. We move on now. Yes, sir.
May I regret that I rise to reconsider?
A motion has been made to reconsider the vote. We're about to miss the vote to reconsider. A motion has been made and seconded to reconsider the vote just taken on Article 17. A motion for reconsideration requires for passage a two-thirds affirmative vote. If you would like to reconsider the matter that was just voted on Article 17, you will vote in favor of the motion for reconsideration. If you do not wish to return and reconsider the matter under Article 17, you will vote no. A motion to reconsider requires for its adoption a two-thirds affirmative vote. So all those in favor of reconsidering the matter that was just voted under Article 17, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The motion to reconsider is lost. It cannot be reopened. We now move on to Article 18. Article 18 asks whether the town will revoke its prior acceptance of MGL 48, Section 42, and insert in its place a new manner of hiring firefighters. The recommendation of the advisory committee is a positive recommendation, so it is the main motion before you, that the town revoke its prior acceptance of MGL Chapter 48, Section 42, and insert in its place MGL Chapter 48, Section 42A, effective July 1, 2015. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion of the advisory committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article 19. Article 19 relates to an allocation from available funds of a sum of money to be used for the Foss Memorial Committee under the design and permitting of a memorial to Seaman Herbert L. Foss, who was awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor. The advisory committee has made its recommendation, which is set forth in the supplement. It is an affirmative recommendation that the town raise and appropriate transfer from available funds, $40,000, for use of the Foss Memorial Committee to design, permit, and defray the cost of initial construction of a Medal of Honor Memorial Park designated by the Board of Selectmen, all as is set forth in the affirmative motion of advisory set forth in your warrant booklet. Is there a discussion? Yes.
I have no objection to this. However, I've been waiting almost, well, 24 years, living in Hingham, for a woman to be named, to be honored, on something we have here. Surely, in the years this town has been in existence, some woman has done something to get her name on something, other than maybe what you cook with.
Mr. Finney.
That's gonna be a tough act to follow. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My name is Peter Finney. I live on 9 Aberdeen Road in Hingham. I am a member of the Foss Memorial Committee, a veteran and a retired naval officer. I come before you this evening as a grateful citizen of Hingham to introduce this important article and pay tribute to a man for whom we all owe in a measurable debt of gratitude and honor. On May 11th, 1898, at the height of the Spanish-American War, U.S. Navy Seaman Herbert Foss set an example of extraordinary bravery and heroism. Onboard the USS Marblehead, off the coast of Sien Fuegos in southern Cuba, Seaman Foss and his shipmates carried out a dangerous and daring mission to sever a major communication cable that led from Sien Fuegos to Spanish ground forces garrisoned inside of Cuba. In spite of heavy enemy fire and a number of U.S. casualties, Seaman Foss and his comrades successfully achieved their mission. Seaman Foss himself was the person who actually cut that communication cable that day. For his actions, the President of the United States awarded Seaman Foss the Congressional Medal of Honor, our nation's highest military honor, a rare and highly prestigious award reserved for only the most courageous of all acts of bravery. After fulfilling his service to the Navy and his nation, Seaman Foss moved to Hingham, where he lived and worked until his death in 1937. On that fateful day 116 years ago, in the perilous waters off of foreign land, Seaman Foss performed an act of courage and valor that continues to resonate for all of us here tonight. It has taken time and the determined efforts of a large number of people, Foss family members, state and town officials, veterans, and community volunteers, to be able to come before you tonight with our recommendation to properly honor him. Tonight, I kindly ask you for your support of this article in the important next phase of our work to honor Seaman Herbert Foss in the memory of all veterans that he represents. Thank you.
Mr. Piles from the advisory committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am Tom Piles from 727 Main Street, and I'm speaking on behalf of the advisory committee. It is in your supplement report that the article is the comments and the recommendation of the advisory committee is reported. This is truly a great opportunity for the town to come together and honor a brave individual who served not only the nation, but our town as well. It's appropriate that town recognize and celebrate Congressional Medal of Honor winners, and at some point, women as well. The Medal of Honor is truly a big deal. There are less than 4,000 such awardees over the last 150 years. This town is indeed honored to have Medal of Honor recipients associated with our community. Two years ago, the Board of Selectmen appointed a committee to develop a plan to commemorate Seaman Foss with a memorial to be located at the harbor. The committee now consists of nine citizens, three from the Veterans Council, one from the planning board, one from the Harbor Development Committee, and four citizens at large. The committee has proposed initial plans for the memorial and is now ready to move forward. There's been much deliberation over the last few months with the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee over this article. The Board of Selectmen has carefully listened to concerns of all and appropriately modified its original article. They have clarified the location of the memorial at the harbor and have designated these parcels to recognize all Medal of Honor recipients. Within this park, a memorial to Seaman Foss will be constructed. This article appropriates funds for the design, permitting, and initial construction of the Medal of Honor Park, the Foss Memorial, and potentially others. It seems very appropriate that Foss Memorial be erected at the harbor given Seaman Foss' has been served in the United States Navy. Many people have worked long and hard to get us here, yet there's more work to be done. The permitting of the park and the memorial will be vetted at various town committees and boards. Ultimately, the Board of Selectmen will have final approval of the plans, but we will all have opportunities to weigh in on these plans. Other Medal of Honor awardees may also be recognized in the park at future dates. Others nominated will be vetted according to criteria established by the Foss Committee with the advice of the Veterans Council, but ultimately agreed upon by the Board of Selectmen. This article is just the first step in recognizing our local hero, Herbert L. Foss. He lived, worked, died, and is buried in Hingham. His distinguished service to the town and to our nation is a source of pride for the town. It is indeed time for us to celebrate our courageous hero. The advisory committee unanimously recommends that funds be appropriated for design and permitting and initial construction of the Medal of Honor Memorial Park... permitting and initial construction of the Medal of Honor Memorial Park, the Foss Memorial, and potential future memorials of other Medal of Honor recipients. Thank you so much.
Is there further discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee under Article 19, which is set forth in the supplemental report of the Advisory Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. We move on to Article 20. Article 20 relates to the prospect of adopting electronic voting in the town of Hingham. It is part of a pair of Articles 20 and 21. As you know, as I said at the outset, all votes are taken in the initial instance here in Hingham as a voice vote, and Article 20 would work a change in the Hingham Town Bylaw to allow for the possibility of voting by electronic means. That is set forth, the recommendation of the Advisory Committee is set forth in its supplemental recommending approval of this motion under Article 8. Is there discussion? Mr. McElany, Chairman of the Charged Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Andy McElany. I live at 26 Myers Farm Road, and I speak to you tonight as the Chair of the Hingham Electronic Voting Study Committee. This, of course, applies only to activities at the town meeting. If you could show me the next slide, please. This first, Article 20, simply would amend the bylaw, as the moderator said, to permit but not require electronic voting at town meetings. And before I go any further, let me show you on the next slide what we mean by electronic voting. As each voter enters the hall, he or she would receive a handset. One is shown in the slide. It's a simpler, easier-to-use TV remote control type thing, frankly. As I say, each person, when he or she enters, receives a device. Next slide. And during the course of a vote, when the moderator says, "We now come to vote on the matter," he will say, "Press 1 for yes," and press 2 for no. The remote control handheld device sends a wireless signal, just like your TV remote control, to a receiver that automatically or quickly counts the votes and displays them, it could be displayed on a screen such as we have behind me, or preferably on a monitor in front of the moderator and the town clerk. The number of votes aye and the number of votes nay are set forth, and the moderator calls the vote. Next slide, please. The issue for Article 20 is this, as the moderator said, our current bylaw requires that all votes in the first instance be voice votes. It then permits a standing vote or a ballot vote under certain circumstances, but there's no authority to have electronic voting. The, next slide, please. If the town ever wants to implement electronic voting, this bylaw needs to be changed. And I said, we are proposing in Article 21, a trial next year of electronic voting. To do even that trial, we would need to amend the bylaw. The next slide, if you would. As we've said, the amendment would permit but not require electronic voting. Ultimately, it will be in the moderator's discretion as to whether any particular article would be subject to electronic voting. On this article, the Electronic Voting Study Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the Advisory Committee all support the motion, the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee under Article 20, and we urge you to vote yes. Next slide. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Yes, sir.
Cindy Hydel, 63 Guilford Road. I just have a couple of questions. I read all the information, and I understand how it would work, pretty simple. Is there some means of checking people, checking the little thingies out when you go out, or is it possible for somebody, for people to come in and people to leave and leave their neighbor with their little thingies so that somebody can vote for somebody else? And also, how reliable are these things? My cable is not all that reliable. So, what happens if you have, you know, 500 people here and you end up with 476 votes? What happens? Who has experience with this?
Thank you.
Thank you. The first question with regard to checking out the handheld devices, as each voter is checked in, if you will, when he or she receives a handheld device, there's a number on the back, that number gets scanned in so that the number of the device is tied into the name of a voter. When you leave, there'll be boxes that say, "Please deposit your handheld device," and when you deposit it, the number is then scanned, and you are checked out, if you will. Now, so if the count on handheld devices at the end of the night comes up short, and 10 people walked out with handheld devices, we would know who the 10 people are. Now, the handheld device does not record a memory of your vote, so when you leave, there's no record of how you voted. This scanning in the number of the device with your name is simply to keep track of the devices. So, that's how they handle on the way out. With regard to handing them off during the meetings, well, as I said, you can't get out, or you can't get out, of course, but you will receive a call from someone later if you leave without returning the handheld device. With regard to handing it off to your neighbor, the short answer is that will not be permitted. And frankly, just as with a ballot vote now, you can't stuff the ballot box by putting in more than one ballot, you will be asked and told that you can't stuff electronic voting by using more than one device, and frankly, we would ask citizens if they observed that to bring it to the attention of a teller, just as a citizen would bring to the attention of a teller the stuffing of a ballot vote right now. I think that answers the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElany. Additional debate questions? Yes.
George Jude Miller, 96 Hershey Street. I hadn't prepared any remarks to speak about this. I'm a retired digital hardware designer and associated system software. I have always been very concerned about electronic voting, and I'll just tell you quickly what my issues are, and the meeting will decide what they think about it. Guys and gals like me are the people who design these things. I have never, ever participated in a design effort of something like this, which did not involve many, many revisions, many, many bugs, some of which were discovered sooner, some of which were discovered later, some of which were never discovered at all. It is essentially impossible to verify that complex digital devices are perfect. There's just no real way to prove it. Notwithstanding that, we all have high confidence, we use the web, for example, for banking, and yet we've just discovered, for example, a few weeks ago, that there was a major security bug that was not noticed by a remarkable number of people in the systems that are used by most of the commercial transactions that we think of as secure. I'm not even going to address the issue of whether somebody could hack the system in some way or not, but obviously, that's something you should think about. I personally am very disturbed by the lack of patency, the lack of obviousness about what is going on in a system like this. Yeah, a guy like me can analyze it and have some confidence that maybe it works or not, but I don't think most people can, and I don't think you really can trust the results of something like this. And I think it's very, the convenience is great, but I think the lack of patency, the lack of transparency associated with these devices, the lack of confidence in their security, is something you should consider very carefully before allowing it into town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tan.
Mr. Moderator. I'm Dyke Crane from 207 Lindenponts Drive. In my past experience as a conference planner and manager, I have used a similar system in 2012 at a religious conference, and I have to say that there was no problem in over 35 ballots that were taken over the course of a day and a half with the system. There was just one handheld remote that did not work, and it was quickly swapped out by the tellers. The system is wired around the room, so they cannot be voted outside the hall, and I have other people who are in religious conference planning have used these, and we've had very successful results. Thank you.
There's a microphone right behind you.
Hi, my name is Eric Gauthier. I live at 53 Rockland Street. I'm a Director of IT. I work in IT. I do both systems and information security. And it seems like we have this backwards. The way this is written, it sounds like we're going to test the system out by actually voting at the next town meeting, and hence, that's why we need a bylaw change. But in any IT system, you wouldn't do it this way. You would go to, say, the town forum, and where you had a large gathering of people in a similar room, where you would say, "Okay, let's put a question up on the board, let's see what happens, let's test the system out." Maybe we would vote on the next article, which appropriates the funds to run the test, but we wouldn't actually approve using it in town meeting before we run those tests. And I think a lot of these discussions about how would it work, and how does the security function, are all questions you're able to answer after you run those tests. So I think this article seems premature, that the next article appropriating the money to run the test seems like the right one to do this year. And then, at the next town meeting, when you walk in, you can say, "Look, we did it at town forum, we did it at these other events, where we had similar situations, here's how it worked, here's the bugs, we worked out the kinks, here's why we believe the security's in place, now let's vote on actually using it in town meeting." Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McElany.
I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. The two articles tonight are first to authorize, or to make an amendment to the bylaw to permit e-voting. The second, Article 21, will be to permit a trial of e-voting at the 25th Annual Town Meeting. At that town meeting, after the meeting has experienced e-voting, that's when you'll be asked to vote whether you wish to adopt this system on a going-forward basis or not. So tonight, we're really asking for authority to run the trial at next year's annual town meeting. The merits, if you will, of e-voting will be debated at some length, perhaps, next year, but we think, after looking at this for some time, that the best way to vote on that is to have people experience it, and then we'll come back with some very hard costs for next year, and you'll know precisely what it would cost to do this vote. But I want to add one thing. We are not talking about a new technology. The generic name for this is an audience response system. It's been around for at least 20 or 30 years. What we're talking about is a relatively recent application of an audience response system, namely in New England town meetings. But every association of several hundred or more members perhaps has used audience response systems, as has every college, and frankly, in our classrooms in the high school, the students use audience response systems. Part of it is the interactivity increases attention and retention of the subject matter. So, the technology is very tried and true and tested, so we're not worried about that. But again, these are questions that can be addressed next year. Would like the authority to do the trial, so we find out if we like it, first of all. Thank you.
Mrs. Power.
Mary Power, 1 King Philip Path for the Advisory Committee. Just to clarify something, the way the Hingham bylaw is written right now, we are not even able to do a pilot unless we change the bylaw. And I think the previous speaker makes a good point that there's aspects of that that feel a little bit backwards, but that's the situation that we're in. So unless Article 20 is passed by this town meeting, we can't do a pilot next year or in the future. And for that reason, actually, the Advisory Committee unanimously supports affirmative action on Article 20. Thank you.
Yes, Ms.
Hi, sorry. Megan Buer, 489 Main Street. I just wanted to clarify, this would essentially turn all votes into a secret ballot instead of no longer publicly saying your vote. Is that correct?
As you see tonight, almost all votes have been virtually unanimous, if not unanimous. It would slow down the meeting considerably if every article, or the motion under every article, were subject to electronic voting. So we don't expect that there'd be more than a half a dozen at most times during a meeting when the electronic voting would actually be used. We don't think it will diminish either the energy or the enthusiasm in the meeting because it'll be used so seldom. With regard to the issues on which it is used, you are correct that the votes will be anonymous or private, and frankly, that is one of the advantages and one of the reasons other towns have adopted electronic voting.
Mr. Carey.
Based on the earlier discussion, I'm not sure that privacy is completely a plus. Andy, I do believe that the preceding speaker who raised the point that we're changing the bylaw permanently only for purposes of a test, and then what are we doing? Going back? And if we don't do anything, then we've got a permanently changed bylaw, and I think that's a flaw. Secondly, in your response to the question immediately preceding, it seemed to me that the wording leaves the question of whether one first has a voice vote or an electronic vote solely up to the moderator, within whom I have the utmost faith, but he's not going to serve forever. So, I wonder if you would be...
If prior precedent is to a...
Yes, yeah. Unless your estate planning has managed to eliminate estates. I wonder, Andy, if you would be amenable to a motion to amend your Article 20, simply substitute after that, subject to passage of Article 21, and solely for purposes of the 2015 town meeting, we add a Section 9, or modify the existing. So that gives you the authority to run the test, and it... And it means we've got to come back and permanently change the warrant article if we like the test because there may be a dispute.
Can you read the... Or give me a written motion? So what Mr. Carey has given me reads as follows. Subject to passage of the motion under Article 21 and only for purpose of the 2015 town meeting, then it would follow as you have in your supplemental. Is there a second on Mr. Carey's motion to amend? Motion has been duly made and seconded. Is there discussion? Mr. McElhenney. Would you like the written motion, just so you see?
Thank you. The first thing I want to say is that the former moderator and the current moderator have vetted this language and have approved it. So if you think I'm going to get up here and say that I think Mr. O'Donnell and Mr. Puzo are wrong, Tom, I'm not. The second issue I have is the amendment would permit electronic voting. It would never require it. If you ever... If the town meeting ever wants to use electronic voting, that bylaw has to be amended. Amending it to permit electronic voting now will take care of that problem. If, for example, Article 21 is voted down, but next year, a different article is proposed and people have been sold on a system that they really think would be dynamite, we would just have to do this amendment again. This is really a technical issue. I don't see the necessity with respect for the amendment. So I would ask you to vote against the amendment and to support the recommended motion.
Is there further discussion on Mr. Carey's motion to amend? Yes, sir.
Kevin Wayland, 681 Main Street. No one has really articulated what's wrong with the current system and why we'd want to replace it with an electronic system. We all know that everybody arrives here at 10 minutes to seven to get in their seats in time. And if there's a long queue because you have to wait to scan in your remote control and people are out into the parking lot, I just don't see... This strikes me as technology for technology's sake. This system that we're all so proud of has worked great for hundreds of years. And to introduce this technology, to me, just seems like a needless complication. And we all know that if we've got to scan these things in when we get here and scan them out when we leave to make sure there's integrity, it just sounds a little needless to me. That's my comment.
Mr. McElhenney.
I'm getting tired of hearing myself, so I can just imagine what you folks are thinking. But the next article will address some of the advantages and disadvantages of electronic voting. And that's the article which asks for some of money to do the trial. So I'd ask you to defer, if you will, on that. With regard to the comment that it's technology for technology's sake, you'll see in the... Under the advantages, it is not that. That the value of privacy, anonymity, accuracy, and efficiency, and efficiency being swapping a 45-minute ballot vote for a 60-second electronic vote is not a use of technology for technology's sake. There is positive benefits to this technology. And I submit that all new... Not all, perhaps, but many new technologies seem at the outset to be technology for technology's sake, including the analogy I'm using, the TV remote control. Everybody had a tuning knob on its TV that worked perfectly fine. The notion that one would not have a TV remote control now, of course, is crazy. But this occurs with lots of technology, and you can think of lots of models yourself. But the real issue that the voter has addressed, I think will come up and be debated better next year when the question is, after experiencing this technology, does the town want to adopt it? And then after experiencing it, each voter will be able to vote for him or herself whether he or she thinks adopting the technology is worth the cost. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi. Liza O'Reilly, 19 Portus Cove, wrote. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters. And several years ago, the League created a town meeting study committee. And I joined that committee once it had already been established. And the goal was to... How do we get more people involved with town meeting? Yes, we've had town meeting for hundreds... Over a hundred years in Hingham. It's part of our seal on the front of your warrant. It's very important to this community. But we need to keep the generations coming to town meeting. Please look around. There aren't very many people left here. We even had a difficulty getting a quorum right at 7:00 tonight, even though last year, we reduced the quorum for the second night. The year before, the speaking times were reduced. Four years ago, there was an article sponsored by the League to create more transparency in the process of having the warrant articles when they were submitted on January 20th, which is the deadline, to holding all of us to that deadline and putting that information on the town website so that more people could be exposed to town meeting and involved in the process. So this, having this opportunity for electronic voting, is continuing those efforts to try and make the meeting more efficient, to bring it into the 21st century, and to create more interest for more people to continue this great tradition in our town. We have a little bit of a generation gap. Now, if we get younger people involved, their lives revolve around technology. But people also want privacy. When we go vote on May 3rd, you vote privately. So when there are big issues, people want to have that privacy. That's a benefit. We do that now with the paper ballot. But if we have these electronic voters, we can sit in our seat, push the button, and within minutes, our moderator will know the results. We'll lose the social time of walking around, but we'll gain the efficiency of having those big, important issues when these devices would most be used. We can gain that efficiency, the accuracy of the count as well, and hopefully, bring more people involved in this great tradition. So I fully support this test. I support changing the bylaw. Because let's move this forward. We need to keep town meeting going. We're very honored. This is a rare legislative branch of open town meeting. It's rare in Massachusetts. It's even more rare in the rest of the country. And we just want to keep this open democracy going. So please vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Yes, sir.
John Holler, 43 Thaxton Street. I think it sounds like Articles 20 and 21 are being discussed at the same time. So this is probably for 21. But I think the first part about do we want to allow electronic voting to take place? I think that's pretty simple. If you want to say, "Do we allow Dixie cups and string?" I'm okay with that. But when it comes down to... I think the issue I'm feeling is, okay, so next year, when we do electronic voting test, would we test that on an actual article? Or would that be used on a dummy article or something like that?
That could be any number of articles.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the last part about the dummy. The intent of Article 21 is that there would be no dummy articles, that the 2015 town meeting would be authorized to use electronic voting at the discretion of the moderator. If the moderator... For example, if the Advisory Committee stood and requested a ballot vote, it would be up to the moderator to decide whether to in fact have a ballot vote or an electronic vote. If he said, "I think the electronic vote would be much more efficient than we would have an electronic vote," and that result would determine the motion under the article.
Is there any further debate? If not, if not, we come to vote on the recommendation of... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Jason Ryan, 16 Brewster Road. I just have a quick question. Many matters before the town, we often compare ourselves to comparable communities. Are there other communities that hold town meeting that use this device? Is there a report or some evidence from those town meetings with regard to how they work and the success of those devices in that form? Thank you.
Mr. McElhenney.
We, the committee, heard that there were 22 towns in Massachusetts that had adopted, rejected, or are investigating electronic voting at town meetings. Two of those towns said, "No, that's not true. We haven't looked at them." So that brought us down to 20. Of those 20 towns, two examined them and rejected electronic voting because of the additional cost. That was Amherst and Westwood. That brought us down to 18, I guess we're at. The... Right now, six towns, including Hingham, are investigating electronic voting. Two towns considered the idea, but it went no further than that. And by that, I mean perhaps the moderator proposed it to the selectmen, and it did not go before town meeting. So 18 down to 16. Of the 16, six, including Hingham, are investigating. 10 towns have adopted electronic voting. Of those, seven are representative town meetings. The purpose of electronic voting at a representative town meeting, of course, is different from what we would want it for. The elected town meeting members' names would be shown on a board, and their votes would be shown beside their names so the voters could tell how their elected representatives voted. As I say, seven of the larger towns, of course, with representative town meetings have gone to that. Three towns with open town meetings have adopted electronic voting. Wayland, Duxbury, and Westboro. Duxbury has adopted it for... Has used it at the 2014 town meeting and has voted to adopt it for the 2015 town meeting. Westboro has voted to adopt it at the 2015 town meeting. And Wayland, I think, is in its second year of using it. Now, I will concede that some of these towns have a different atmosphere, let us say, in the town meeting. And perhaps there's a greater need for anonymity of voting. One of these towns is combative, I suppose. Wouldn't be the worst adjective. But a small town that has a town meeting that goes five to six nights, and everybody is very angry at each other, perhaps needs electronic voting more than we do. But in any event, there are three towns with open town meetings that have adopted it. Seven representative town meetings have adopted it. Two towns that have looked at it have rejected it. I suspect that over the next... Course of the next couple of years, more and more towns will look at it because, quite frankly, the vendors of these Audience Response Systems are only now realizing that New England town meetings is a potential market. And there's been one company that has dominated the market over the past two years so that of the 10 towns that have adopted, nine use their system. But we've spoken to other vendors who have other systems and frankly, cheaper systems. So we think over the next year, a lot is going to be happening in this space.
Mr. Page.
Hi. Barnard Page, 100 Wampe Tech Road. I have been at every town meeting for the past 20 years. Well, I get paid, so... But I'd be here anyway. With that being said, when we redid the high school and we had five different rooms happening, every... To the best of my knowledge, every single key issue has always come down to a ballot vote. It takes time. A lot of the people who volunteer their time here... I mean, the place is already cleaned out. A lot of the people have already left. The only thing I would be concerned with would be, A, the expense, and B, how you... You know, do you send out the Robocop's for people who want to take souvenirs or something like that? But other than that, I mean, it's not going to hurt to give it a try and see if we like it. And like I say, every... It's probably been 100 or so of these ballot votes. And we play the game. Mr. O'Donnell's got to wait to check this person and that person. And it's just... It's really... It's a lot of effort. And if we could just push a button. As far as being hacked, I don't think anybody's going to hack some article on whether we're going to pay for an extra detail or a hoop or something. So I mean, you know, it's... We can play what-if, what-ifs, but it's not going to hurt to at least give it a try once. If we like it, fine. If we don't, we're back to this. Thanks.
Is there any further debate? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee. I'm sorry. Under the... Thank you. Under Mr. Carey's amended motion. So first, we come to vote on the amended motion proposed by Mr. Carey. All those in favor of that amendment, please say aye. All those opposed, no. The noes have it. The motion is lost. We come to the...
On the main motion, I would like to offer a very simple amendment. I would encourage there to be no debate if someone will second it. And it only says, in the very first line where it says, "Except as otherwise required by law, all votes shall be taken in the first instance by voice vote," to strike out the rest of that sentence because I think we want to have all the votes be voice vote. And so, strike out or by electronic vote as determined by the moderator. All the rest would be the same. So all votes would be a voice vote. If it went beyond a voice vote, we'd have the opportunity to have an electronic vote.
So Mr. Friedman has made a proposed amendment, which has been seconded to strike out in the second line of the main motion of the Advisory Committee, the phrase "or by electronic vote" per an e-vote as determined by the moderator. The substance of this amendment would require that all votes be taken in the first instance by voice vote and would preclude using electronic voting in the first instance, even if so decided by the moderator. Motion's been duly made and seconded. All those in favor of Mr. Friedman's motion to amend the main motion, please say aye. All those opposed, no. The noes have it. The proposed amendment is lost. The amended... The affirmative motion of the Advisory Committee then remains as set forth in the supplemental. All those in favor of that recommended motion, please say aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. I'd like to finish tonight with Article 21. Article 21 asks, "Will the town transfer a sum of money from available funds for the purpose of conducting an electronic voting pilot program at 2015 Annual Town Meeting?" The recommendation of the Advisory Committee is that $15,000 be allocated from available funds for this purpose. Is there discussion on this proposed motion? Hearing none, we come to vote. Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. I would entertain now a motion to adjourn our meeting until 7:00 PM tomorrow night. So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjourning until tomorrow at 7:00 PM here at the high school, please say aye. All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. We'll resume with Article 22. I encourage you to be on time. I encourage you to be on time and to bring at least two or three other voters with you.